Good evening. This is our regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, 6:00 PM, January 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
Councilman Cruz. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilman Hicks.
Present.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandabaugh.
Present.
We have Cora.
Thank you. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we have an appointment to make.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call down Ms. Marcy Turner. Ms. Turner is being recommended to, for appointment on the Board of Review. She comes to us highly recommended, and she comes to us with a very wonderful background, just very applicable to the position that she's being applying for. And she demonstrated to us during the interview that she's well qualified. And, Mr. President, I would like to entertain a motion to have Ms. Turner appointed to the Board of Review.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointment to the Board of Review for Ms. Marcy Turner.
It has been moved by, sorry, yes, it has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to appoint Ms. Marcy Turner to the Board of Review. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Turner, if you have a, it looks like you have some supporters want to take pictures. If you want to come to the front, you can take some pictures if you'd like, get a better view.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
Of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter.
And the City Charter.
Of the City of Southfield.
Of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Office of.
The duties of the Office of.
Board of Review.
Board of Review.
In and for.
In and for.
The City of Southfield.
The City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Subscribe and sworn to me before this 21st day of January 2025. Thank you.
Thank you.
She called me before the meeting. You can check my phone logs.
Ms. Turner comes to us with a very good background. She was on a Board of Review for the City of Detroit, and she came highly recommended, again, by one of her colleagues on the Board of Review for the City of Detroit. So I feel that Ms. Turner, in doing our interview, she has the wealth of knowledge, and she will bring something to the table. So anything you want to say, Ms. Turner?
I'd just like to make, for the record, a slight correction, Mr. Brightwell. I was not on the Board of Review for the City of Detroit. I was in the manager in the Assessors' Office, but I worked with the Board of Review of the City of Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're still qualified. Thank you. All right, thank you.
And, Ms. Turner, we'd like to congratulate you if you'd like to come up here and...
Yes.
It doesn't. See if the best for last. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good things. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations again.
Thank you to all of you. I will proudly serve the City of Southfield.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on the Fire and Police Retirement System Board. You want to make an introduction? You're more than welcome.
The Board of Review, I mean, the Board, our Boards and Commission Committee this year initiated a process where we will inform the council and also inform all the city members, all the citizens of the City of Southfield, about all our boards and review, about 26 of them. And this way, we will let you know that the boards and commissions are an integral part of the city, and we are the backbone of the city. Most, the Boards, Board of Review, all of them are open to all the citizens of the City of Southfield. And this way, we are encouraging the regular citizens to get involved. And this way, we are highlighting the boards and commissions, and also letting the, letting the boards and commission know how much we appreciate them with their time and their ability, and giving out, loaning their skills to the City of Southfield. Tonight, we have one, which is the Retirement, the Fire and Police Retirement System Board. And this is a very important board, and it's important to the citizens and also important to the employees of the City of Southfield. And I can just tell you that when we were interviewing Mr. Lohrenberg, there was info that was significantly invaluable and significantly eye-opening for all of the members of the Boards and Committee. And the info is very valuable to all our citizens also. So with that, Mr. Lohrenberg, can you please go proceed?
Thank you very much. There's a lot of information, and so definitely I'm happy to be available for any follow-ups from any of the members of council, or any of the other electeds as well. But I'll try to keep it brief for our viewing audience. I know you have a lot on your agenda this evening, so I will summarize it as best as possible. So the City of Southfield has a fire and police retirement system that's designed to provide financial security for the members of, and retirement and disability or death benefits for our public safety officials, public safety officers. And it's managed by a Board of Trustees. There's Public Act 345, which dictates the parameters for the Board, as well as also union contracts, and we have our own rules and regulations, as well as our investment policy that we follow. But it's based upon Public Act 345 that the state mandates. The Board is consisting of five members, and those five members include myself as City Treasurer, ex officio on the Board. Then there is a representative from the Police Department, a representative from the Fire Department, which are each voted on by their members. They're selected on, I believe it's a semi-annual basis, by annual basis, I'm sorry. And then there's also two citizen representatives that are appointed by City Council, that get approved by City Council. And the Boards and Commissions bring forward the two citizen representatives for reapproval every time that needs to be approved. They act independently of the city, so there's a separate body for the Fire and Police Retirement System. They have a Retirement Plan Director. They maintain a separate budget, and they have their own outside legal services, as well as an investment consultant, custodial services, which keep all the securities that are invested for the, for the system, as well as also a medical director to review any disability claims, as well as actuarial services to come up with the valuations of what the liability will be for the city that we would have to contribute to be able to fund, fully fund the pension system for our representatives. The funding and contributions, the goal is to keep a stable contribution rate as a percentage of members of the payroll. So each payroll, every two weeks, there's a contribution that's sent over to the custodial bank, as well as also the members themselves, the employees contribute towards the plan as well. Currently, the city contributes 45% of payroll towards the, towards the retirement benefits, towards the pension benefit. That's separate then the retiree healthcare benefit, which is also a separate number, which there's a separate board for that, but it's 55% for that payroll. Current valuation of assets, we currently have $204 million that we're currently investing, and the actuarial accrued liabilities is $304 million. So we result in a funding ratio of 66% funded right now. And there's a dedicated millage that's on the summer taxes that helps to fund the pension system for the fire and police employees. The investment performance as of the end of September, which are the last official numbers that we can present right now, because we're still waiting for the results to come in for the last quarter, we have other alternative investments that take a little time to come up with their returns. But the one-year return was 18.1% net of fees, and the five-year return was 8.3%, and the 10-year return was 7.14% net of fees. The investments are managed by 19 different investment managers, which also the investment consultant oversees the managers that we select, and it's also approved by the Board. So it's a combined effort. The consultant brings managers that he feels are worthy of choosing, and then we'll have typically like two or three finalists, and then we will interview them, and then select which we feel are the best performers that will enhance the returns for the system. In addition to that, we also review each year all the managers to make sure that they're, that they're performing up to standards and above standards, and we want to make sure that we have the best managers for the system. So if we feel that a manager is underperforming, we'll put them on probation, give them a warning, and within three to six months, if they don't improve the performance, then we'll have to search for a new manager at that point. Just an idea of the benefits that we're paying out, what it's all about, and the entire structure of the system. The retirement typically is for eligibility is 20 years of service and a maximum of 25 years for pension calculations. And then we also cover for survivor benefits, as well as any disability benefits. Fortunately, we've been blessed that we really have been, we have not had disabilities in recent years, so we've been very fortunate in that regard. But that's part of the disability benefits, long-term disability, is covered through the pension system. We currently have 214 active employees between the Fire and Police as of June 30th, 2024, and the average age of the employees is about 37.2 years old. They've, on average, worked for us 10.1 years, and the average annual pay is $110,005.41. And as I mentioned earlier, the city contributes 45% of the payroll towards that pension benefit. We are considered a mature system right now because there are more retirees than active employees, so there's a large burden that, that's being carried. And that shifted over in the early 2000s. That's when the two paths crossed. Originally, we had more actives than retirees, but because as the city gets older and as people live longer, we end up having more retirees for the system. So currently, the total number of retirees and beneficiaries as of June 30th, 2024, was 420 people compared to the 214, so it's almost two to one that, that we have. And the annual benefits that we pay out are $18.3 million, and the average age when people retire is 51.6 years old, and the average age that the average retirees right now is 68.1 years old. And our goal is, we've tried to outperform our expectations. We have an expected rate of return of around 7%, and the goal is that, you know, we want to keep that going, well above it, and be able to make sure that our public safety employees who've worked very hard are able to live comfortably, and we fulfill our promises that we've made to them. So any questions I can answer from the Board, from the council?
Council, have any questions? I have a question. Sure. You have a question, sir?
No, I just want to comment for the general public that the rate of return that we are producing for our retirees is sterling. It's a sterling, excellent return. And I just have a flashback that when I was in the income-making stage, accumulating stage of life, that a 8% or 7% return, that was, that was just unhart, it was sterling. You can, you can live off of that for a very long time if you have a certain nest pool and you attach these rate of returns to it. That's golden. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the presentation. It's good information for us on council to know, as well as for our citizens and our residents to know. You mentioned that we currently have a funding ratio of 66%. Where does that stand amongst other municipalities? And then, is that a good ratio or not?
Well, we've had some challenging years. 2022 was a very challenging year, whether you were in bonds, whether you were in stocks. The market got creamed in 2022, and there was no place to hide, you might say. But even with that built in, you see our returns that we've done, and we've had that factored into the returns. So the state, this past year, had, they had excess funds in their budget, and they decided that they wanted to do something to help out the local municipalities. And so they looked at the pension systems, and they felt that they wanted to help those that were struggling and had a lower-than-standard average rate of return, and assist them in terms of getting, getting as funded as possible. So they set the level at 60%, and we were above it, so unfortunately, we weren't able to get any additional funds. They rewarded, not, some people say they rewarded bad behavior, bad performance, but that was something which we can't, you know, we do the best we can, and we, you know, that situation. So we would say we're somewhere in the middle of where the funded ratios are. Because we are a mature system, that's why we have a heavier burden than some of the newer cities out there that don't have as many retirees. And years ago, we used to be well overfunded when we had, you know, when we had less, less employee, less employees that were retired than active.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much again for the presentation.
My pleasure.
We appreciate it. Next, we'll move into our communication portion of our meeting. And just as a reminder, the council, if we do respond, will be at the completion of all the communications. We won't stop in the middle to respond to the residents. We will respond if needed at the end. Each speaker will have three minutes. I just ask that the audience please give their respect to each speaker and the respect that they're deserved. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employer, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employer, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. And again, if, if there is a comment warranted, it will be made after communications has been completed. Our first speaker is Willie Brooks. Willie Brooks. Mr. Brooks, I see that you signed up twice.
Yeah, because I wanted to put something in that second space.
Okay, but yeah, you still only have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to address the council about police brutality, false court law violations. Can I call the officer's name or not?
I'd rather you not.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Mr. Brooks, did you, did you want us to continue speaking?
I don't think there's no use if I have any idea about what I'm speaking about. If there's no subject, I might speak to others. Thank you.
Could I, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Brooks, have you taken this up with the police chief?
Mr. Brooks?
Sir, Mr. ... Have you taken this up with the police chief? That's, that's the place you start if you have a concern about the police department or a particular officer?
I've written the governor, the attorney general. I've written the attorney general, the governor. I've tried to reach the police chief.
Well, I just want to know, have you started with the Southfield Police Chief?
Yeah, filed reports. I have it right here. They won't, they won't even respond to me. They won't talk to me. They won't get a report. I was falsely accused, and they came to my house to murder me. I've never had any problem with white people. Well, I did set the cotton house on fire.
Do we have your contact information? Because I will ask the police chief.
It's on my list.
I will ask the police chief tomorrow to get in contact with you.
I, I do not have your phone number, but if you can leave it with our city planner, we'll make sure that we hand it over to the police chief and that he, he does respond to you.
All right.
I'll follow up tomorrow.
All right, our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I'm here actually to follow up with a few city concerns, primarily in regards to a local municipality next door to us receiving nearly $400 million for basement sewer backups, and another $35 million for private sewer connections. One of the neighbors in our community attended last meeting and was told the reason why Southfield does not have that is because we're too affluent of a city. Well, I'm the first to say we live in a great city and that we are brimming with opportunity and possibility, but please enlighten me on what affluent city across the state lacks so many community amenities as we do here in Southfield? What affluent city has no swimming pool? Outdated municipality? Lack of large-scale grocery options? So affluent is not an excuse not to try to secure funding for residents. If a neighboring municipality can get $45 million for private septic sewer lines, why is it that Southfield did not roll up its sleeve to fight to get $5 million to help support our residents when we've had these complaints since 2016? You have an entire community that comes here to says every time it rains, their basement's back up with raw sewage, feces. Why did we not roll up our sleeves and try to get some of that funding? Please know that every retiree is not sitting on a large fixed income. We do have residents here suffering from those same problems who may fall in those financial criteria. I guess my concern is trying to figure out why we aren't doing more to find a solution for these folks. They're not coming to Badger. They're not coming to bother. They're coming here with legit, real concerns. And we're not talking about one or two individuals. We are talking about entire communities, neighborhoods that are impacted by this. When are we going to get more creative and innovative with our visions of finding solutions? We have the SNRI and Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation that we allow to use our city's first refusal rights. Why are we not using those to help house people, to get them out of these houses, if that's the issue? Just asking.
Thank you. The next number of people I've noticed want to talk about the oil change business that is on our agenda for later on in our meeting with our public hearing. You will have a chance to speak at the public hearing. You are welcome to speak now as well, but there will be an opportunity later on in the meeting to talk about that specific item when it is presented. The next speaker is Beverly Manley.
This is my wife. Can we come together or go separately?
Allen.
You each get three minutes. So. That, that's fine. So. Correct. So. You each, you each signed up separately.
First of all, I want to say thank you, council members, for inviting us to come, or had the opportunity to come, Your Honor, Honorable Mayor. You want to start first or me?
I can start. Hi, I'm Beverly Manley, and I want to say thank you as well. We're concerned about the oil business coming to our street because, first of all, that street is pretty small, and not only that, oil and gas combination, it affects people with asthma. And we have grandchildren that has asthma, and we really are opposed to having something like that over there. We, it's other reasons, we, it's like, it would be like a house in between the oil company and our home, and it's very close, and we have like swing sets and stuff in our backyard for our grandchildren. So we think that it would be detrimental for this, a business like this to be built in our neighborhood. You know, like I said, the, the street is so small, and having all of this, you know, traffic going back and forth, we already had to deal with homes being built in our neighborhood, which we didn't even get a chance to come to city council and say yea or nay, and that caused... And that caused a problem because now the street is so small, we're fighting to get out of our driveways, because when people park across the street, then you can't hardly get out, or if you're trying to back out. So, adding something more to me would be really not a great idea, because to me, it would cause more problems with the gas and the oil, you know, and trying to be outside in the summertime and smelling all of these different things. I think that it really would affect our neighborhood with more pollution. So, thank you.
So, are you done, Ms.?
Yes, I'm Beverly.
Okay. So, next we have Ellen Manley. Just want to make sure the clock restarts, so you get your three minutes. There you go.
Okay, my wife already has spoken on some of the issues that we oppose on, that we don't agree on at all. The one of them was the traffic coming off from Southfield, coming off from Silver Maple, where we live at, and trying to enter Southfield Road. It's a problem because we don't have the light. It's just a heavy traffic. Okay, we deal with it. Now, we right there on the corner, like you said, we're one house from the corner. Then we have the, if you have that implemented, that'd be so much, it'd be a problem. We live on a street that's 10 feet wide. It's old school. It's 10 feet. It's paved, it's not concrete. It's asphalt. We have no sidewalks. We have children. If you have a narrow street, 10 feet wide, no sidewalk, kids, our driveway is only so long, they want to ride their bikes up down the street, like we did when we was younger. You remember? This would be a problem. That'd be a problem. The smell, the traffic, the noise pollution. Already, I chose to live where I live, and I got traffic, and I hear the noise at night. Summertime, we lit our windows up, you can hear it. I almost got used to it. I have relatives live next to the airport. I said, "How in the world you ...?" But they get used to it. Bringing that oil change in company will be even more. And also, I'd like to, with the smell and the, let me see, I got it right here. If I pick it up and read it, I don't have to guess. The children playing the noise pollution and smelling the oil, and it's not good for environment. I did a research, can you hear that? I did a research on the oil change business. There's nothing good for the environment. They say very little. It wasn't very little pollution, you know, and they try to minimize it far as it's not that bad, but bad is bad. So, anyways, nothing good will come from this that I see for our neighborhood, which is so small, and for to bring more traffic into our area. That's the mineral for us, for the noise pollution, also for our kids riding their bikes and just enjoying themselves in our neighborhood, so.
The last one.
Okay. Oh, and this is the last one, maybe, but my time, yeah. If, I don't know the value of a house. If I chose to move now, it might be better for me financially than it would if I chose to move after the oil company come in. Who wants to live next door to an oil? I wouldn't. I mean, some people may, but I don't think I would. I don't think that's right. We've been over there over seven years, not very long, come to this community thinking we're going, because we're come from, we're born and raised in Pontiac, went to East Point, and we came here. So, anyways, while I keep babbling, I just wanted to force my opinion that I don't think it's a good idea, and those are the reason why.
You're called.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Minnie Shivers. Shivers? Minnie?
I'm just a supporter.
Okay, Ms. Turner, did you want to speak again?
No, I'm just not here.
Okay. Keith Harris?
You know, every time I come here and I hear the complaints of our residents, I'm like, "Wow." You know, I've had an easier time dealing with drug dealers than I do some of our elected officials. Really, I could shut drug dealers down faster than I can deal with politicians. I want people to understand one thing. I'm working like heck to get our local DIMC club to get more involved with the politics, because politics is local. We need, I want everybody to get involved with our local DIMC clubs, and I want everybody to get involved with our Black Caucus. We haven't had a Black Caucus meeting since 2020. That's sad. 2020. And what's the purpose of the Black Caucus? It's for us to express our issues. You know, in 62 cities in Oakland County, 62, and black people live in every one of them, and we should be able to fix these problems. We just can't have an MLK march once a year and still resolve nothing. You know, Martin said, "A man can't ride your back if you ain't bent over." That's what Martin said. A man cannot ride your back if you ain't bent over. It's time to stop, and these men start standing up like men. I'm tired of the biggest criminals being our elected officials or people in our DIMC clubs. It is really time that we wake up. Wake up. Nobody wants the oil company next door to them. Nobody wants to keep fighting just to have an average, everyday life in Southfield. Really? You know, I bought a couple of houses in Russell Woods, and I play with you now. Beautiful neighborhood off a broad street, and I had an easier time shutting down the drug dealers than I do with my own politicians, working with us. I'm all over the state of Michigan fighting for gun laws. I'm all over the state of Michigan fighting to stop, you know, the liquor store gas stations in our community. I'm working so hard to make life livable in the black community, just livable. When will y'all start making life livable and making life easy for our seniors? When will we stop coming here? I'm asking people, please join your local DIMC club. Please join your local Black Caucus, and we will make sure your voices are heard. And these problems, you bring them to them, and we will fix them.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Timothy Fort.
Good evening, City Council. I'm also a resident on Silver Maple, where this oil change facility is proposed, and I also want to agree with the concerns of my neighbors. The environment, I can't really speak on since I'm no expert on it. I hope you've done your due diligence on that, but as far as this traffic goes and the size of our street, the size of our street has, it's a problem, but once there's construction or anything done on Southfield Road between the freeway and 10 Mile, or even on 696, and anything on 10 Mile, our street becomes a thoroughfare for everyone else. It's a shortcut. They cut through our street, and they go over to 10 Mile just because they want to get to the freeway quicker. There was work done on 10 Mile. My street had a traffic jam from the corner, four houses down, and if I needed to get out of my driveway, I couldn't do it, because they were backed up on my street. They use our street as a shortcut, and it's small. And once again, they built homes on that street, and people park on the street. Once they park on the street, it's hard to get by. Two cars coming down at one time have a problem coming down. School buses come down the street. I was coming down the street a couple of days ago, and I had to pull over almost on someone's lawn because the school bus was coming down the street. Now, can you imagine having cars going to an oil change place, trying to go onto Southfield Road at any time of the day? That street is busy. You can't get out there. You can't make a left turn. You got to go right, and if you need to go left, you got to go backwards down our street, go over to 10 Mile and make a left. And the reason I say that is because in 2013, I was leaving out going on Southfield during heavy traffic, go out, turn over into the center turn lane, and a guy is barreling down the center turn lane, and we met head on. My car wasn't totaled, but it was very close. We weren't injured. No one was injured, but this happens. This traffic is too heavy to allow an oil change place on that corner for people to try and go out onto Southfield Road or turn around and come barreling down the street the other way, because it's too heavy to get out. That's my concern about this oil change place, and I don't think it will do any good for us, maybe for you, but once again, for our property value, it will go down. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Ali Murhi.
Sorry, I checked in.
Got it.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. At our last council meeting, I gave you a copy of what a FOIA form looks like and what it asks for, and it said a copy, a written copy. I got a verbal one. It's not on that form. Yes, the mayor did speak to me, but what I asked for was in writing. There is a time limit on which those are supposed to be answered. I have not received anything asking for an extension. So, if it says written, why was I given an oral? And why haven't I been given a written or city of Southfield letterhead? Now, the second thing I then spoke to you about was the sewer line on Circle Drive, in which there was some verbiage that there is some sheets that we signed off we're not having a sewer line placed on our street. Now, I can say since I was a resident there at that time, that there was no such thing given to us. Now, hopefully, since it was said to you that there is some type of form or something that can prove that it was, I hope you got it. Please say you got it, so I can FOIA that, and hopefully, I'll get that as well. But I know nobody on there said that. I also know that you have gotten a piece of paper that said as well that we don't know, or it's hearsay, as to who said yea or nay. I can tell you positively, it wasn't the residents. So, once again, have you seen the evidence? Have you questioned or asked why haven't you seen the evidence? If not, why not? You are there because of voters, and I think those are voters that I'm talking about. So, are you up there for the voters or not? Or are you asleep at your jobs? Or do you have no empathy towards the residents? Or you feel indifferent towards the residents? I would just like to know, do you have evidence of it? Please say yes. Please say yes, because I definitely want a copy of that. Oh, and please feel free to add in the fact that it was stated that all the suits were won from the lawsuit for SNRI. I want to know about the one from the Supreme Court. Please put that on the form, too.
Your time is up.
As well as put the one for... Was that that?
All right, our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening to council. I go back with this city 42, going on 43 years, and I am not going to allow people to use the People's Podium to come up here to try to campaign and get some free airtime because they're running for office. I am not going to allow that. You want to run for city council, you get a platform, you put out literature, and you're not going to use the People's Podium. This is the People's Podium. Everybody in this city already knows that the citizens are at the top of the organizational chart. I've been saying it for probably about 42 years. We're not going to allow campaigning at the People's Podium. Now, a lot of these people get up here and they talk, and when you talk, you should have some kind of proof. Extraordinary statements require extraordinary proof. I do not like it when people get up here and use buzzwords to try to campaign, to try to scare the seniors into voting for them when they don't have all the facts. I'm not going to allow that. And when I say I'm not going to allow that, I have been at this podium for 42 years, and I have never ran for city council. 99% of the issues that I've talked about at this podium has nothing to do with me, my life, or my husband. I have been a voice for the people, but I'm not going to let people that want to run for office prey on our seniors with incorrect information. I'm not going to allow that. Now, some of the people that have got up here to speak tonight, they have been racebaiters. They have tried to divide this community, and as we move forward, I'm going to show every nasty flyer that they put out talking about our elected officials. You may not agree with them, but you're not going to disrespect them with all your negative literature that we know is going to come out when they campaign. I'm going to be showing all the literature, and before you run for office to represent the people in this city that I've called my city, one of my cities, for 42 years, you're going to apologize to every elected official that you had on that negative flyer. And I'm talking about Keith Harris and Stacy Jackson. You're going to apologize to these elected officials before you think about representing anybody in this city. My city is Southfield.
That concludes our communications for this evening. We will try to, I want to address some of the comments that were made. There were a number of residents who came to speak about the oil change business that is being proposed on Southfield Road. That will become, there will be a presentation and a vote on that later in our agenda, so I don't want to make any comments now, because there will be opportunity again later to look at the entire project and answer some of those questions that were raised. We did have a speaker who had an issue with the police department, and we did get his phone number, and we will pass that along to our police chief, who is very transparent, and will definitely call that resident and have a conversation with him. We did have a speaker who talked about grants for sewer lines. Mr. City Administrator, you wanted to address that?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. After the last meeting and after every meeting, I usually have my assistant go through the comments, and we try to make sense of some of the statements that have been made. The last meeting, there was a statement regarding grants. The city was unnamed. Looks like our research has showed that the city of Detroit did receive $346 million in federal disaster funds to prevent basement floods. and forty-six million in federal disaster funds to prevent basement flooding. That was in response to the flooding that happened two years ago. In order to be eligible for those funds, an area has to be declared a disaster. We've not had a disaster declaration within the city of Southfield. The last time we chased federal disaster funds, we spent in excess of $200,000 in an application, working with HRC, only to be told there were no funds. You have to remember, we've been in a very unique period of time in American history where there's been a lot more money available. People throw around different funding opportunities. I have said and shared with council, when funding opportunities come along, we work with our engineering consultants and the various consultants to chase those dollars. The question of whether or not we are eligible for the same bucket of money that the city of Detroit got, the answer is no. It has nothing to do with our income requirements or anything. We were not declared a federal disaster area during that last rain event. Part of that is the entire east side of Detroit, like the east side of Southfield, is in a combined sanitary sewer system, and they are at the lowest point. You had all of the freeways along Ninety-four shut down, the communities in the points. It's interesting, none of the communities in the points, they were in that same disaster, were eligible. So that's one consideration. The other part of that, there was forty-five million that came out of ARPA funds that the city of Detroit was allocated. I don't have their total allocation, but our allocation was under ten million. When the ARPA monies were being decided, the federal government, their response was, we have existing infrastructure in place. That infrastructure was the HUD Community Development Block Grant, which is a combination tied of your housing stock and other demographic characteristics of the community. Southfield got nine, not just under ten million. Royal Oak got thirty million. And the reason is, and in this very room, this council with our former Congresswoman, we had this conversation about these formulas being in place. These are...some of these grants are formula-driven. We currently get, on an annual basis, less than a half million dollars, where Detroit's annual block grant allocation is almost twenty-seven million. Royal Oaks is about 1.5. Those are the normal funding formulas. From time to time, special carve-out buckets of money that were there. I could tell you, we just submitted an eighteen million dollar grant to the EPA, well-written, not funded, hyper-competition for these grants. So, and I just, you know, I'm going to leave this note with, you know, just last year in just roads, we received over seven point three million in grants, federal grants for road projects. We received 1.2 million for San Marino. We received 550,000 for Lead Copper. I've asked Public Works and Engineering to prepare a...and hopefully, we'll be presenting at the February third committee of the whole, all things water, what we've done for water, sewer, and that. I will leave the audience one question, a few things to think about. On septic, in the late nineties, early two thousands, the city spent thirty-eight million dollars putting in sanitary sewers for people to connect. The majority of those should have been connected within three years after that system was built. That never happened. And it wasn't until 2014 that we actually started enforcing an ordinance that requires septic systems to be inspected. It's only fair that if you have a private septic system, that you're inspected every three years, that you're not polluting your neighbor's yards, and in many cases, your system's not failing. When we started that in fourteen, we had roughly eighteen hundred folks still on septic. You're down under about nine hundred and sixty right now. You're slowly making that connection. But perhaps the question should be, why did everyone else pay for a system to be built and no one's connected? Again, why did everyone else pay for a system and other folks haven't been connected? Many of these homes above the Rouge Corridor, many have openly flowed and polluted directly right in to the Rouge. So those are the types of things we need to be thinking about as stewards and responsible people. The grant question is very complex. We chase these dollars when they're available. I want to comment about Mr. Greg Keeler's comments. He asked, and I'm going to just focus on questions three and four. The city has never had sewers on Circle Drive, so no money was spent on placing. His statements were that we removed a sewer system. If one was never put in, one was never removed. His fourth question, and again, these responses were both put to our city engineer, who's been here a long time, as well as our new director of Public Works. So I want to go back. Circle Drive has never had a sewer line, nor was one ever removed. Those homes had private septic. Like everyone else, they need to have their septic system inspected every three years and make sure they're working. If they're not working, they simply can rebuild their septic system. There's nothing that says they cannot rebuild their septic system. Oh, and if they're income-eligible, we do have a program to help them pay for that. And the...if you're low-income, you could get an interest-free deferred grant to point of sale, meaning you do not have to pay that money back till at which point you sell your home. The fourth question, we have no evidence that LTU ever proposed a more extensive sewer system along Circle Drive. A screenshot from our GIS shows that LTU did install a small section of sewer on Circle Drive as part of the dorm. That was done in the right-of-way. They have access to it, and that was to serve that dorm. That's within their right. Lee Schultz is our engineer. We're going to do a little bit more...we're going to ask LTU if they have any other plans to do any other sewer work. There's nothing that's been submitted to us. The...I'll stop there. The records we have are what are in the city's GIS system and in our paper records. This bit that we removed a sewer system simply is not true. Those homes were built years ago. They were all on private septic. And I'm just going to say this for the viewing audience. This has been a repeat issue, and it's been coming up every meeting. A year, it was addressed in writing. Two years ago, it was addressed. We went through, and frankly, we spent a lot of taxpayer monies on this paper chase with the same individual. And in fairness to everyone, we've got to recognize, you know, it's a paper chase. The fact is, a private individual who does not have access to a sewer has to have a working septic system. And if there's not a working septic system, we will work with the individual to get one. But that's the private individual's responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. We also had a speaker who mentioned some outside organizations. We can't really address those because we don't control those outside organizations, different clubs throughout the city or the county or the state. Our city administrator touched on some of the other items. There was a comment made about losing lawsuits regarding the SNRI. I will just briefly mention that, again, is not a city organization, but I have been told that the SNRI has not lost any lawsuits, even at the Supreme Court level. So that information that they did lose lawsuits is false.
You know, Mr. President, I'd like to just add a comment. The Southfield nonprofit owns, what, four hundred and fifty-four apartments? That we provide a...
Five hundred and eight.
How many?
Five hundred and eight.
Five hundred and eight apartments, all senior housing. And I'm going to just remind council and the public, in 2014, when we refinanced those properties, the Section Eight contracts were expiring on December 31 of fourteen. The renewal we did on that made those affordable. We also put in about $40,000 per unit in renovation. We also have SF Community Renewal that's undertaking the renovation of the McKinley School project to save an old building and build some new homes. We've also built new single-family homes. All of that's been done on the guise of increasing the market value of our homes. In neighborhoods where we told you couldn't build a $425,000 home, we did, and we followed that up with a home that sold for 430,000, building new homes in neighborhoods that people said, oh, you'll never get more than 200,000. The SNRI, I love, you know, Section Thirty-four, Thirty-five, when the home, when we started the program, the homes were assessed at thirty-five to forty-five dollars a square foot. You're now hitting 175, 165 to 175 dollars a square foot. We brought back those values. The SNRI still has a loss primarily associated with the litigation. But just also remember this, with or without the SNRI, these folks had lost their homes. The courts had already said they no longer have ownership. We acquired the properties for the back taxes, made all the taxing jurisdictions whole, made all the taxing jurisdictions whole, including Taylor, I'm sorry, including the city, including the school board, including the county, they were all made whole. We also renovated these homes and did incredible things. We tore down, I don't have the exact number, thirteen homes? All of that. None of us in this room would want to have looked at any one of the homes we tore down. Every home had environmental testing. We had homes that had fifty-plus tinfoil pans in one of the rooms, water and mold just growing up the walls. You couldn't even breathe in the home. So this constant victimization, it's got to stop. This has been about protecting everyone's home value, and I wanted to say shame on anyone who can't recognize that. You know, what I do every day and what the rest of my management team does, this is about protecting this community and protecting our values. And I'm sorry if that's offensive to anyone, and damn it, if it cost me my job, so be it. I, along with others on my team, were tired of these threats about our employment as well.
Thank you.
We deserve better.
I also want to...one of the comments that was made was about, you know, residents' homes being flooded and filled with feces and things like that. You know, the city is working on an entire investigation of that neighborhood. So far, nothing has been shown that the city caused any issues. The investigation is still ongoing. But just as a couple examples, you know, somebody realized that their sump pump was turned off, and that's why the water was not pumping out of the basement. Another resident realized they lost, they came back from vacation, realized that they had lost power in their entire home. And again, their sump pump was not working. So, you know, you have three homes in a row. Each house had a different issue, or maybe the house in the middle did not have an issue. So to say that an entire neighborhood had an issue or was not being, you know, that there was a problem is not always true. Just because someone has an issue doesn't mean that it was a city issue. You know, the city does care. We've sent, we've, over the holiday weekend, the city actually sent out some employees from their water department from their homes late at night to go inspect a resident's home because there was a call about water coming into the basement, and that was one of the issues. They found out that, you know, the resident, for some reason, decided to turn off their sump pump fuse, and there was nothing that the city could do about that because that's inside the home. So the city does care for its residents. The city does do what we can. There's a number of factors, and just because somebody wants to blame the city doesn't always necessarily mean that it is the city's fault. But we have been talking to the residents. We are working on getting them a resolution, one way or another. Many of them may not like the answer because if it is not a city issue, there's not much the city can do, but we are trying to work with them as these issues do come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our communication. Thank you for indulging us, council.
Thank you.
Next is our consent agenda. We have a number of items. I did have a request to have item E pulled for discussion. Are there any other items that council would like pulled for further discussion? So I will take a motion on the other items.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda item A, John Gray's Fourth Amendment, B, Laserfish additional licenses, C, approval of professional services contract for promotional examination for police dispatch and fire positions with MP Co., D, authorization to replace Beach Woods Recreation Center entrance walkway retaining wall, F, authorization to replace two slides at Egle Nook Park, G, authorization to contract with OHM advisors for library mechanical upgrades, construction phase services, H, authorization to award bid for library mechanical upgrades, Chiller Project, and I approve the fire police retirement system SERs 2024 summary annual report.
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Haynes, to approve our consent agenda, which are items that are routine, non-controversial, or have been previously discussed. Council, do you have any other questions on these items? Again, these are items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, and I. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to ask our Parks and Rec Director to come up. For item E, authorization to restore and improve the damaged deck at Carpenter Lake. Councilman Hicks had a question.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi. As I read through the report, we were to receive eighty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from MMRMA, but the recommendation below only accounts for seventy-nine thousand of it. So I guess I'm asking, before council approves, should we amend that ask to align with the eighty-five thousand, four ninety-nine versus the seventy-nine thousand, nine ninety-nine?
I would love to do that, but MMRMA, in reviewing the project after we sent it out to bid, reimbursed us the seventy-nine, nine ninety-nine and took the eighty-five off the table.
They... Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. We, sure. You can't hear me?
Yeah.
When we first brought this to you, we were working with MMRMA, and one of the consultants with MMRMA that did this work, this kind of repair work, so when we came to you, we asked for that recommendation. What we were told is that we needed to go back, work with our building apartment, put this out to bid, do the specs, make sure it was all appropriate, because we were expanding the fishing pier to have two bump outs, approximately four by six. So when we sent that out to bid, sent our numbers over to MMRMA, MMRMA's reimbursement was for the construction of that project, which was seventy-nine, nine ninety-nine.
So when was this discovered? Or were you made aware that the...
Throughout this process. As soon as we came back with our bids and we went back to MMRMA, I know it sounds, I know it sounds crazy, but that's exactly what their wording was, is when we went out to bid for this project, the project costs were then reimbursed at seventy-nine, nine ninety-nine instead of the eighty-four.
So where I'm confused is, if that's the case, when we had our meeting last week, why wasn't that brought up? And two, you gave more detail that showed that we are still receiving that additional amount.
We're receiving, we've received some of those funding to this point. There's a breakdown in your letter. We received some dollars back for reimbursement, so the seventy-nine is the remainder of the reimbursement. If you look at the breakdown...
No, the deductible is twenty-five hundred.
Deductible says...so I think the math, the math that I'm, that works out for me...
Sure.
Is there's a deductible of fifty-five hundred.
Correct.
So if you take the total project of the eighty-five...
Before you go there.
Yeah.
MMRMA... MMRMA approved $8,000, $5,500 is less the deductible.
Perhaps the math is what confused some folks.
It gets reported.
Because what we're asking for is the $108,999. So actually, it's the additional, so it's the $10,500, the $79,999, and the $18,500 for a total of $108,000. After all of reimbursement, we are going to be paying $23,500. So we've received some monies from MMRMA to this point.
Did the council, was that presented to council to receive those funds?
Pardon?
The funds that we've received thus far, was that presented to council for us to receive those funds?
Um, I don't believe so. It was during our initial insurance claim, when we put that in, so I think I'm giving you the correct answer.
So here's, here's my question, because the math is a little confusing.
Confusing, sure.
Do, do we, do we need to approve this tonight, or can this come back at a later time with a more clear understanding?
Yeah, we worked really hard, believe it or not, it may look confusing to you, but we worked really hard after our council president's meeting to be able to show the exact trail of dollars coming in from MMRMA since the very initial claim. But we certainly can work to maybe make it a little clearer. If we, if you were to approve it tonight, they could start in February. I don't think bringing it back and giving some clarity will hinder the project that much. We certainly can do that for you.
I think there's a concern from the councils, exactly what we're approving and how we got to that number.
We can show a better trail for you.
So, is that the wish of council? Okay.
Okay.
No.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. That is all the items on our consent agenda. Next, we have items to be discussed and/or take action on. Our first item is item A, the pump station maintenance. We have our Public Works Director here.
Good evening, counsel. So on December 19, 2024, so last year, last month, the Purchasing Department received three bids offering pricing for pump station maintenance, which includes quarterly inspections, repairs stemming from those inspections, and emergency response and repairs. After review of the proposals and vetting of the companies through reference checks and interviews, JK of Michigan LLC of Jackson, Michigan was selected as the lowest qualified bidder. HESCO of Novi, Michigan was the incumbent, the contract had expired at the end of December, and they were the previous contractor for this, for this contract. The tabulation is included, the tabulation of bids is included in your packet. The proposed service contract will facilitate regular inspections and maintenance of the city's 17 pump stations. Funding for this contract includes repairs and maintenance on an as-needed basis. Funds are available in the 24, 25 water and sewer contractual professional account, and will be requested in future budgets as council may approve.
Counsel, Councilwoman Hoag?
Uh, thank you. One quick question. You're gonna, we're going with JK of Michigan.
Yes.
But they came in significantly lower than the others. Do you have any concerns with that?
No.
Maybe the quality?
So HESCO's pricing in the, in the contract that recently expired was the same, was very similar to JK of Michigan. HESCO has actually tripled their price, so for the quarterly pump station inspection, HESCO has tripled their price. JK of Michigan is actually, is on the same, they've offered the same price that HESCO had previously.
That they had previously?
Yeah. Now JK of Michigan isn't unknown to us. They, but we checked their references. They're more popular in the mid-Michigan area, in the, in the Jackson-Lansing area, and they're actually quite well-known. They're a premium vendor over there. Some of the references were surprised that they were low bidder, actually.
Do we know why HESCO kinda tripled theirs? Any indication?
I'm, we're not sure. We haven't reached out to them.
Councilman Brightwell?
I have a similar question to the councilwoman, but let me just start off with respect to, this is an elementary question, what is the function of a pump station?
So the pump station, basically, it collects the sewage come into a low point and lifts it up to, to an outlet sewer, sewer.
Okay. And we have 27 of them.
Seventeen of them, yes.
Excuse me?
Seventeen.
Okay, seventeen. What is, which, which one is the most problematic? Because I've heard this, is the one right up here, 12 Mile, 11 Mile and Evergreen, is a problematic point?
The one on, sorry?
Well, I think it's 12 and, I mean, 11 and Evergreen, right up here. Well, just answer quickly, what is the most-
So I guess the one that's sort of at the, at the center of these recent complaints of the neighborhood flooding, that's the Pierce Station one, that's on, on 10 Mile and Pierce.
Okay.
But, you know, we have several pump stations, we, they're all different. Some of them, if, you know, we can, we can, if it fails, we can give it half a day and it still wouldn't back up. There's others that we have to pay more close attention to, you know, that would, if it fails, it would fill up within an hour, and so our, our staff is very familiar with the sort of individual personalities of the pump stations.
Well, that, and that's, that is important because these things serve a very valuable purpose. So, and what, what comes to mind, we recently approved something at 11 and Evergreen, is that, is that correct? That was before your time, but probably several months before your time?
Maybe, yeah, 11 and Evergreen. I'm not familiar.
Okay, well, getting back a little bit, and looking at-
I'm sorry, so 11 and Evergreen, there was the Harvard Pump Station, I'm sure that's what you're referring to? The one on the Service Drive there?
Yeah.
Yes. That's, that work is wrapped up now. It's almost, the station is almost back in service now.
Okay. And looking at the numbers, I had a similar question that the councilwoman had. With these low bids, and when I've looked at bids, when, when things are so out of whack like this, there's, you get, that, it was all the info given to the, all the bidders, similar info, was anything reason why the JK, HESCO, and Jet Pump, their bids are all over the place?
Yeah, but it's all the same. The RFP is, it was the same for all of them. They had the access to the same information. There were some questions that were asked, and the answers were distributed to all of the bidders.
So, so your last, your comment in answering the councilwoman, you indicated that they, I mean, this is just wide, the dollar variance here is just wide open. So there's no rhyme or reason other than, you know, hypothetical, that, that we feel comfortable with JK, and they get it because word of mouth is their good, and it's just a make-
Also, I'll say JK's pricing, like I said, is in line with what HESCO was previously offering, and so that's why we feel comfortable with their pricing. As far as their, their work, we haven't experienced it, but the references that we have checked were, you know, they checked out, they were actually very, very positive.
I'm aware of contracts that we had here, I've been around here for a few years, and we realized certain companies did not want our business, they wanted to get out of the business that they were giving us. So, does this tell us that HESCO and Jet, they just, they don't want Southfield business anymore? Is that pretty much what that's telling us?
That may be the case for HESCO, but Jet Pump, no, because Jet Pump was, they were very keen to follow up with me on when the, when the RFP was coming up, so I, it, they gave the sense that they were actually very interested in the, in the, in the contract, but they came in as the highest bidder. I have looked into them a little bit, it seems like they're not necessarily as experienced, they're more experienced with selling and servicing the equipment, the pumps, but not necessarily doing the preventive maintenance on the pump stations overall.
Okay. Doing the construction, doing their work, when the work is being done, when were the earliest sign to you that they don't, that this is going down a bad road here? Because this, this kinda scares me a little bit, all these bids all over the place, and they kind of, as a, as a person that, that, that been in corporate America for a little while, if, when will be the first time you know that these individuals, this company is not up to doing what they said they would do? And how will you monitor this from a progress standpoint?
I mean, I would say, you know, the first quarterly round of inspections, we would have a good idea. And, you know, definitely the first time we come across an emergency, you know, we'll, we'll be able to take their, you know, their pulse as well. So it's, I feel like within, within three months, we'll have a good idea.
You mean, in three months, and progress along, we won't wait until we sign off and pay for everything, and three months after that, we get a problem?
I mean, if we get a problem, we, we can, we'll work with them to try and resolve it if there's a performance issue on their part. Otherwise, we can work with our city attorney to try and get out of the contract and re-advertise it, you know, but, right now, we're currently actually asking for a year and a half until June 2026, and then there's two options for extension.
Okay. All right, okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes. Oh, hold on, Councilman Hicks?
So, the question that I have is probably more for city attorney. When we contract with this organization, what are our safeguards, our guardrails on performance?
So, until council approves it, I have not looked at the contract, but I can speak from most of our contracts that we have with the vendors and we work with purchasing. There are certain clauses within the contract. Some will say we can end the contract without cause, the other ones may say with cause. And then there are ones where we may, they may have a right to cure, or they'll have 30 days, a certain number of days to cure that, and if they don't, then we have a right to terminate the contract.
And along those lines, do we put in any kind of performance guarantees?
Depending on the vendor, those would be built into it, but again, I haven't seen this one, but there are some that are built into it in the states, you know, what the warranty is. It just depends on the vendor.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does, does our purchasing director wanna, can you answer those questions? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yes, the contracts, most of them are where we have a 30-day with call, so from the date of the letter, once Abdul contacts the purchasing department, I will get in contact with legal, and we will write up a letter informing the vendor that from this date, 30 days, without cause, if that's the contract, that we are terminating our contract with them. Now, if there is a situation, let's say hypothetically, there is something where they do not return a document or something to us within a timely manner, if that is the case, we can terminate it. I go reach back out to legal, and we are able to terminate and move forward to the next candidate, which Abdul will discuss with our department and legal, and move forward.
Well, just, well, shouldn't we do that due diligence before the contract is, or the recommendation is brought before council, so that we can understand that comprehensively, we understand what we are contracting, you know, on behalf of the city with?
So in general, the contract is a, is a general contract on which the city makes with the vendor. Now, in certain circumstances, we have, in the past, found that we have worked with the vendor, had the best interest with that vendor, but unfortunately, we did have to terminate that contract. And sometimes, the lowest bidder turns out to be the best person for the job, and sometimes the lowest bidder is not. So unfortunately, it's like anything in life. We've discussed it, Abdul and I have worked together, but at the end of the day, it's a chance we have to take.
Like, I guess the question is, why would the contract not have been reviewed prior to come in at council?
I can answer that. Because we want to make sure the council, you know, there's a bid process, and in that bid process with the RFP, they're presented with everything that the city's requiring, and we usually have standard contracts that we use, that were drafted by legal. So all of that is in the contract, and they see that before they actually complete the bid. And then what happens is, once we know that they've, you know, reviewed it, they put in their bid, now we bring it to council because 95% of the contracts, unless we just have a rogue vendor, this is, oh, I didn't see that, which I don't think has ever happened, then we just re-review it one more time, but we do have the standard contract. Especially on projects with DPW, we usually use our standard Southfield contracts. So when it comes to council, you know, it's over $10,000, and before we start looking at things, we want to make sure council agrees with the pricing, the project. But on these type of projects with DPW, we use our standard contracts, which the vendors have already reviewed when they are going through the bid process.
So, I'm sorry, going back to my original question, based on what you just asked. My original question was, do we have the proper guardrails and safeguards to protect the city in our contracts?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
50% of my day is spent reviewing contracts and editing and sending them back if it's not the standard contract, but those are the things that I have to look for. But like I said, with this type of project, that was already built in with the contracts that we, as a city, had developed and presented to them, and they review it in the RFP.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Okay, I'm just trying to understand something. You said that you check each individual company. What's the process that you go through for checking the reference? How do you do that? I mean, like for a job, I know how do you do it, but how do you do that for companies?
So we ask the companies to provide references in their bid, with their bid, and so we check their references, we call, you know, the references, usually it's another DPW director in another municipality somewhere. In this case, it was some townships in, in the Jackson area. We called them, confirmed that JK works for them, confirmed that the type of work that JK is doing for them is similar to what we're asking, and confirmed that they're satisfied, they're pleased with JK's performance. And then we also called JK in to our office and sat down with their team, and, you know, I had my supervisors and superintendents there, and they were satisfied with, you know, JK's-
So you're not just taking, you're not just taking the lowest bid, you're going through the process of checking, talking with them, and the pricing part?
Correct. It's the lowest qualified bidder, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Councilwoman Hoag?
Mr. President, I move that we authorize the Water and Sewer Division to enter into a contract with JK of Michigan, of Jackson, Michigan, for maintenance- for maintenance and repair of pump stations for one and a half years until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, with the option of two one-year extensions with funds provided from the applicable account. And, uh... Will be requested in future budgets as, as we approve.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve the pump station maintenance agreement that has been presented. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have, uh, item B is an approval of agreement for preventive maintenance on Bridge Street Bridge, Structure B, and the Tamarack Trail Bridge. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. So, the city has received our contract documents from MDOT for a bridge maintenance project, which includes maintenance on the southbound Bridge Street Bridge, which is over the Bruges River, and the Tamarack Trail Bridge, which is over the Evans branch of the Bruges River. Um, I'd like to take this opportunity to inform council and the viewing public about Southfield's bridge assets. Um, all sixteen of Southfield's vehicular bridges are, um, over watercourses, and these bridges are mandated to receive routine bridge inspections every two years. Um, as part of that, since 2011, these bridges also require a Level One scour assessment. That was a, a newer federal requirement in 2011. And then, in 2012, um, road, load rating evaluations also became required. So, these are all part of our biennial bridge inspections. Um, the map up on the screens here is a map of all of our bridges. The map as part of the council item just shows the location for the two bridges that are within the project here. The estimated construction cost for the maintenance on these two bridges is five hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred fifty dollars, uh, with the federal and state bridge funds, which cover ninety-five percent of the construction costs. So, the city of Southfield's cost share is estimated at a hundred and thirteen thousand, seventy-one dollars, which includes our five percent of construction and fifteen percent estimated for construction engineering. Uh, the funds for this project will be provided by both local and major street land improvements accounts. Um, Bridge Street Bridge is on our major road network, but Tamarack on our local street network, which is why you see that cost share between those two funds. Um, construction is expected to start the very beginning of April, 2025, and to be completed by the end of May this year. So, this evening, we're looking for council to approve the project by adopting the resolution, which authorizes the mayor and clerk to sign the MDOT contract on behalf of this city after review and approval by the city attorney's office.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, so moved, but I'll repeat it. I move that we authorize the mayor and the clerk to, uh... We, we approve this project and for them to sign the contract with MDOT as approved and reviewed by our city attorney.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, for the approval of the agreement for preventive maintenance on Bridge Street Bridge, Structure B, and the Tamarack Trail Bridge. Any other questions, counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we'll move into the public hearings and site plans. We only have one item for discussion this evening, and that is, um, PZR two-four dash zero 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 eight, a request to rezone the western ninety-seven feet of two-four-four-one-two Southfield Road.
Thank you, Council President. As noted, this is a, it's actually a rezoning, and then we have a special land use after that. The rezoning always comes first, because that is the, if the rezoning doesn't pass, the special land uses don't want to relevant. Uh, this is two-four-four-twelve Southfield Road. It is on the east side of Southfield between Stratford Drive and Silver Maple. The existing zoning is OS service on the front part. There's a small strip of P parking in the rear, which we'll show on the map. They're looking to rezone the OS apart to B three and leave that P parking zoning in place as a buffer to the residential. You can see it here on the current zoning map, that gray at the back of the property. That's the P parking district. It's, I believe, thirty-five feet wide. Yeah. So, they're just going to be rezoning the OS part in the front. The P thirty-five feet remains that. The P district means they can only be used really for parking. You can't put a building there. And then, it's residential, R three residential to the east. To the south is B three general business, and then we have other OS zoning in the area. The, uh, community future land use map calls for local mixed-use scenario. The B three zoning is consistent with that. This is a site aerial just showing the property vacant as it currently sits. Um, you can see no sidewalks. There are some ditches there. Those would be going away, and there'd be onsite stormwater management designed as part of the project. This was discussed with the, at the planning commission and the, with the city engineer. Condition, existing condition survey, obviously a vacant property. There's actually a vacated public alley in the back there, in that P dare area, so they couldn't build on that really anyway, because there actually is a, an easement. This is the site landscape plan. Uh, as you can see, the building starts to the north side, kind of in the center. One driveway off of Southfield, no curb cuts on Silver Maple or Stratford. All traffic coming in and out of that central drive. You enter in, they go around the back of the building, enter from the back, get their oil changed, exit to the front, and then go back out. There's a little bit of parking along the south there with a shrub hedge. There is a screening wall along the entire east boundary, as required by the code. It's a decorative brick screening wall with the, the decor, you know, brick facing to the residential side, actually both sides in this case, and some additional trees actually proposed in that area. The art of proposing, or being required to really, put sidewalks all the way around the site to help kind of close that gap in our sidewalk network. Uh, one of the things that was discussed at the planning commission, and is indicated by the detail just to the right of the plan, is that there be a sign that limits to right turn only certain times of the day. They went back and forth, planning commission discussing that. What they decided to do, and it's in the recommended resolution, was to defer that to the city engineer and the police department recommendation to, um, determine what times those, that sign should specifically restrict those left turns or allow right turns only. Uh, there was substantial discussion of how difficult certain times of the day it is to make a left turn onto Southfield. Um, this is just a delivery footage showing that all the deliveries in this facility and the pickup of the waste well actually occurs within the building. The vehicle is shown in this photo, and the owner actually operate, or the applicant operates other facilities of this type, comes into the site, pulls into that bay, does all their loading and loading inside the bay, and then exits out. Now, I did note, want to note, we do have some, you know, the ADA parking with the crossing over to the public entrance. There is a bike rack kind of in the south, be the southwest corner. And, um, also, there's, you know, landscaping along the edge of the building there. These are the elevations that are proposed for the building. Those are the front and back. These are the ends. Floor plan, to the bottom is the front of the building. To the, the top is the back of the building. As you can see, there's three bays. And then, off to the right there, you've got the sort of lobby entry area, public toilet, storage, and then the stairs that go down to the area where they service the vehicles from. Um, this is a picture of the applicant's facility in Livonia. He has, on, um, Plymouth Road, very similar to what he's proposing here. Since he had an example, and he's actually is up and running, he was kind of to provide these photos just to show, you know, how these facili- this facility would look. And the petitioner is present. If they'd come forward?
If you can give your name and address for the record, please?
Ali Murray, two-six-three-nine-eight-Symone, Dare One Heights, Michigan, four-eight-one-two-seven.
All right. Um, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up a couple of the concerns that everybody had. Um, I believe that they think that we're going to come in and off of Silvery, uh, Silver Maple Street. Um, we are only going to be using the entrance and exit on Southfield. There's not going to be any entrance or exit on any of the side streets. Uh, that was one of the first concerns, I believe, everybody had. Uh, second, we are not going to be carrying any gasoline product that one of the other, um, residents had a concern for. It's just the oil base. I've had asthma since I was fifteen years old. I've own, I own four of them. I've never had to use my inhaler. You're really not going to smell it. And as for the extra pollution, there is no extra pollution. Uh, it's, and a vehicle get, it's the same pollution that is driving your vehicle. We're not going to add any extra pollution to the atmosphere. Um, we're actually trying to go as green as possible and put as many trees and landscaping as we could.
And between the businesses, between this business and the homeowners, the, the residents, there's a brick wall?
There's a thirty-five foot buffer, and then there's an additional twenty-five feet to get to the building. But yes, from the thirty-five feet that we have, we have a brick wall, and we have, uh, trees, thirteen to fifteen-foot trees that are going to be going up in front of the, uh, wall.
If you look at the top right of this slide, you can see the detail for the wall. So, that wall goes along the entire rear property line of the property between it and the residential. And then, there is a, uh, a, a green buff- buffer with a tree planting as well on the business side of the wall. The wall's on the property line, just like a fence typically would be. That way, though, you don't have a weird maintenance gap between the wall and the neighbor's fence, because the problem with you put a wall six foot off someone's fence, now you got to get in there and do maintenance. It causes its own problems. Um, but yeah, this is pretty standard, but where any of our commercial districts are but residential, six-foot screening wall is required.
Okay. So, we will have a public hearing now. Please have a seat, and we'll call you back up afterwards. So, this is a public hearing for PZR two-four dash zero 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 eight to rezone the western ninety-seven feet of two-four-four-one-two Southfield Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. We just ask that you give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Juropeal, Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. I'm not in favor of this rezoning. And I agree with the people that live on that street, and that particular area is not too far from my Southfield home. I do agree with them in terms of the oil and other potential contaminants, because oil has a very distinct smell to it. And I'm not sure what a place like that could do to take the fumes out of the air. What I would like to see the petitioner do is to find some of those vacant places that are already zoned for what it is that he wants to do, and put it in that area, like we are trying to rebuild the Northland area. So, we've got some businesses, I think, um, or places on, uh, Greenfield that that would work out. Um, we have some places on Eight Mile, I think, that they, that that would, uh, work out, that type of business. I think that there's a place right there on Nine Mile and, and Beach Road, right there by, uh, the fire station. It's already a gas station. It would be a great spot. I don't know if it's for sale or if they're going to open it up, but I'm just not for putting these things so closely in a residential area. That is a very narrow street. Um, I think the development is only going to compound some issues that are already a problem on such a narrow street. And as Mr. Manley said, it's only ten feet wide, or the other gentleman that got up to speak. I'm just not in favor of it, and I would like to see the young lady from Economic Development try to help him find another spot that's a little bit more conducive. But I support anybody wanting to try and open up a business to provide a service to the community, or even to support their family, or because they love it. But I'm not for putting it in an area where it doesn't match the character. And we have to remember what Robert Gibbs said, who's one of the most notable planners in the country. He said, "Just because the zoning may fit for a particular business, if it doesn't match the character, the city does not have to deal with it, and neither should the people." Thank you.
Counsel, I just would like to say that, uh... The process system engineering research states that, that, that oil mixed with gas of your cars coming to, coming together is, um... It makes people have asthma. And with asthma, it, um... It makes them sick and die. So, like I was stating before, I have grandchildren. I have some, one that has asthma. Not only that, when my husband and I bought that property, my husband was working full-time. And now, he's retired, and he works part-time here for the city. And so, we were able to pay, purchase a house, uh, for that amount of money. And now, the houses are going up more. So, trying to be able to move from our home would be pretty difficult to do, to get what, what we have now for that standard of living. I agree with this young lady that it's several other places that this person can buy and, um... The own, uh, oil place, uh, oil business, uh, oil change business. I'm sorry, I'm sleepy. I usually be in bed at this time. And, um, I'm pretty sure he doesn't live in that neighborhood, because I just heard his address. But however, um, it's so many other places. To me, that, that little area that we own, I think we probably have maybe, I'm not sure, maybe twenty houses on that block. When we first moved there, it was way, it was like eight. And so, just, it's something always going on, constantly building. Like I said, we just had these other homes built across the street where they're not even, you don't even have to be a homeowner to live in these homes, which can bring down the property value, like it's always something. We were hoping to stay in this area until we leave this earth. But however, if this is built, then we will probably, most likely, try to move. Because I'm not having, I'm, I already have this electric pole in front of my house that I was asking about. I'm not even sure what that's doing, coming in my window. And so, now, I got some more, something else that's coming, this pollution stuff with this oil. You know, it really concerns me, so... And then, it doesn't enhance the neighborhood. Our neighborhood is just fine the way it is. I'm not trying to stop things from progressing, but sometimes, we need to leave well enough alone. Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, now that I've heard the gentleman's plans and some of the, uh, solutions that the city has, um, presented, now you're, you're putting restrictions on us now. We live on that street, and we know when and how to maneuver, but now you're going to tell us, "We can't make a left turn on Southfield Road at a particular time of day because now his business is there." So, now you're going to restrict us?
I don't want to stop you. The, the restriction on the turn is only for the business.
Only for the business?
Correct.
Okay.
For people exiting the business.
Okay, okay. So, that, that's fine. That's, that's good. Thank you. That's good to know. Uh, one other thing that I failed to mention, across the way from us is a church, empowerment church. Their driveway is connected to our street. Whenever they have a function, or if they rent their building out, we can't get out. They take, um... Privilege to make right turns in front of us. Um, they, they, they come and make left turns into that facility. Now, you're going to have something going on at that facility, and you're going to have this oil change place going on, people making left turns, right turns into that building. Traffic is already bad. Now, we've told you, traffic gets really heavy on Southfield Road. You got a freeway at one end and a freeway at the other end, and people are trying to get to either or. They're going to tie up that right lane going into this ga- this oil change facility. We're trying to get out. We can't get out. They're going to be making left turns into that facility. You already have... You already have signs that say, "No U-turns" and these people are U-turning anyway. There's, the, I guess the question is, is there going to be any enforcement to, to make sure these people aren't using our street to come down Silver Maple, make a right turn to go into this building, make a left turn into this building and come back out and decide, "Oh, I want to make a left turn anyway" just because there's a sign. You already know they, they don't pay attention to stop signs, let alone a, a no right turn, I mean, no left turn sign. But it, 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 it makes it really hard to, to believe that this is going to bring some, I don't, I don't know, greatness to, to Silver Maple and to Southfield Road because there's an oil change place there. We already have two gas stations. Now you're going to put another business that brings people in and there's noise, there's going to be pollution. He says, "No smell of gas or oil," but I'm not buying that. I'm not buying that. I live right down the street from there and I can hear noise all the time and a six-foot wall won't do it.
In Detroit, we have fought against these same situations in Detroit. I don't agree at all that an oil exchange place should be put there for environmental purposes. I also don't like the fact when some of these oil exchange places, they keep cars overnight. Or they, or they just park cars in their lots, period, which is bad too. So, you know, I absolutely agree. We have shut some down in Detroit. Don't let Southfield turn into Detroit. Please don't do that. Think about what you put in Southfield. We need no more liquor store gas stations and we need no more oil exchange places. You guys got to start thinking. Thank you.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office, Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven. I lived near this vacant lot for over fifty-five years. This is the last undeveloped lot on Southfield Road in the city of Southfield. History tends to repeat itself again and again. About forty years ago, the then owner of this property petitioned this Southfield City Council to rezone this property from OS to B3. Council said no then. And council should say no tonight. The reason for the rezoning then was to, is the very same reason tonight, to build an oil-changing business. It was a bad idea then and it's a bad idea now. The property north of the vacant lot is Zone OS. And the property south of the vacant lot is a church. Prior to the church, it was a Shriner's Building. And prior to that, the city of Southfield owned it. And prior to that, it was a synagogue. When it was a synagogue, that's when the then owner of the vacant lot tried to rezone the lot for an oil-changing business. Forty years ago, at a council meeting, we had a huge crowd. And we asked council to vote no. And council did vote no. I'm proud to say I was one of the many to ask council to say no. I would like council to do a, a thought experiment. Would you like your church to be next to a oil-changing business? I don't think so. East and contiguous to the vacant lot is a residential housing district. Would you like to live next to an oil-changing business? I don't think so. Now, if you owned a office building, would you want your office to be next to an oil-changing building? I don't think so.
Your, your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to PZR two-four dash zero 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 eight? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. I'll ask the petitioner to come up. You've heard some additional comments. Would you like to address any of those comments?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood on Silvery Lane.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Oh, my apologies. On Silvery Lane.
Raise it up.
Yep, is that better? I'm sorry. Silver Maple and Strafford Drive, there are going to be sidewalks that we're going to be having to place there. So the kids can ride up and down the sidewalks as needed. There's nothing there right now. So it is kind of dangerous there and it does have some slopes for drainage, which we're going to be filling the, the slopes up. And then it's not only a six-foot wall that's going to be buffering the two. We also are going to have fifteen-foot trees that I believe you guys seen earlier, that's going to buffer the, and for right in front of the wall, it's going to be. So, I mean, we would love to work with everybody and if they would ever want to come out to our place, they're more than welcome to come to our current location and see that they're not going to smell anything. And there's no extra pollution that's going to happen there. We are not a gas station. We are a quick loop. It's an instant quick loop. They change the oil and you're on your way. We do not leave any vehicles overnight. We do not do any mechanic work neither. It's very simple work that we do. Cars are in and out.
All right, Counselman Hough.
I have a couple of questions. The last time, I believe if I'm not mistaken, when you were here, you said that you had talked to the people in the neighborhood and that they were okay. Can you tell me how many or which neighbors did you talk to?
That was during the summertime when we were cutting the grass. We had a few neighbors come up to us. And they were happy that something was going up instead of nothing. And that was the plan from the last city council. So when they had asked us, we told them we were erecting a quick loop there. Who and how many, I do not recall.
Okay, so you didn't go to a neighborhood association or talk to neighbors yourself? They came to you?
Yes, correct.
You didn't take any initiative to go to any neighbors to let them know what you were doing and to see what, if they, what they thought of it?
No, maybe I should have. But at the time of purchase or before the purchase, we did come in front of city council just to see if we were able to. And we were, they said that it was something that we can possibly do. So we went ahead and purchased the property thinking that this was going to happen.
Because I think we recommended that, if I'm not mistaken, we did say something like that. In addition to that, you mentioned that a truck would be coming. What time would the truck be coming? What interest would the truck be coming in? What kind of, is it a big truck or what does it, you know?
I believe one of the pictures we're showing, that's one of the type of trucks that delivers some of our oil and also delivers our air filters and wiper blades. The next one's just a little bit bigger and they do fit through our bays perfectly fine.
And that's within the walls of the building, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and it's not late at night or?
No, ma'am. It's going to be during business hours.
And, um, I, we have a, a oil station by my house. And I will say that, I mean, I live kind of close to it. There is no, I don't hear any noise and there's no parking. Really, there's nowhere to really park. But I see you have parking there because you have, I guess, people that come in from off of that street. Now, everybody comes in on Southfield Road, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And so the, the street that they're, they're, they can exit other ways, like on Silver Maple?
No.
They can't exit on that street and they can't exit on the other street? So everything will be coming in on South, Southfield Road?
None of our customers would ever be able to enter, exit off of any of the side streets that are around us.
Okay, so that's even better. So that keeps the noise out and the trees. I mean, even the, the oil station that I have by my house, it would be nice if they did have trees.
Yes, ma'am.
Not that we hear anything, but it just keeps, you know, just nice air. The lighting, is the lighting going to affect the neighbors or?
No, so we're, so we, we, when they do, I think in the plan, it shows it's directly onto our property only. And it's not even going, I'm going to say maybe ten feet from the back bay door. There's no lighting that the neighbors are going to get affected and they are going to be on a timer. So our lighting is probably going to shut down around eight PM. And as for the parking, those are for pretty much employee parking. We never have any customers that leave their vehicle. Again, it's a ten-minute quick loop, so.
And I, I think I asked a question before, no tire storage, no extra anything, no parking overnight? And maybe this is to the deputy. You said something about a traffic study. Was there a traffic study done?
No, no, not on this one. No. What would happen is there was a discussion at the planning commission, like extensive, at both hearings, both meetings, discussing how busy Southfield is and that certain times of day, making left turns out would be nearly impossible. And they made it a condition that they put that sign restricting left turns and that the timeframe that will be on the sign will be determined by the city engineer and the police department based on their experience with the traffic levels. Because we monitor traffic on those roads.
Okay, so when you say you monitor the traffic, do you see what the residents saw with all this traffic? Because apparently there's something going on with the church, the oil, I mean, not the oil change, the, the residents and all of this. I mean, is there a need for a traffic study?
Large institutions like churches, theaters, when they have events and everybody comes and goes about the same time, they have these peak periods. Banquet halls are the same. Oil change places, you come in, you change oil in under ten minutes, then you're released to one at a time. So the traffic exiting is like a very paced exit. There's no like rush out. And generally speaking, in my experience with most quick loops is if you drive up to this, if you're thinking, "I'm going to get an oil change," you drive up this gulu and you see cars stacked around the building and out to the front, you're not going to wait on wait in that line. You're going to keep going and do it somewhere else or do it later.
Okay, but we're talking about Southfield Road. I mean, I'm just asking because I know coming off of that freeway and on the Southfield Road, I mean, just like, well, I won't say the other business, but there's, you don't want standing on Southfield Road at any time with any cars at any time.
And because they enter from the back, they have to enter all the way around the back of the building to enter, it gives a longer stacking lane. If they entered from the front, that actually could be problematic and they might stack out to the road. But the fact they have to loop around the building to the rear and have three entry points to the rear of the building means you can actually put a lot of cars stacked before you end up backing up.
So there should be no, I'm not guaranteeing, but just saying, most likely, there won't be any stacking.
You're talking ten or twelve cars backed up before you would actually end up, not counting the ones in the bay. If you count the ones in the bay, you'd be talking fifteen cars before you'd be blocked on the sidewalk.
And it's very rare, how we, it just sort of the exit, we're speaking of the exit part. We have three employees. One, a hot tech. Two, a courtesy that does airing the tires, cleans the windows. And three, a pit guy. So we can never at one time release more than one car out. They'd get cashed out, the next, that car would leave. And it's very rare that we even get three or four cars stacked to the back of it. And again, I'll invite anybody out that would like to come out and, you know, see how our other, other establishments are, are being ran. It's the same concept. We've never gotten more than three or four stacked up. And then again, I'm sorry, I want to go back to, it's only, so during the rush hour, I think we made it, there's a sign there that you can only turn right off to Southfield during the heavy traffic times. I believe it was six to eight, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Or five to seven.
When the council, when the planning commission made their recommendation, they decided because they weren't as experienced as the city engineer and the police department with that, they would defer that, that you would have to comply with the recommendation of the city engineer and the police department. That's the actual condition that's written. Because that could change, like say if traffic patterns change, it could potentially in the future alter. And then a change could be made if the city engineer and the police department believe the hours should be restricted either, maybe a little broader or a little narrower or at a different time.
Are your hours of operation the same in the winter as they are in the summer and what are your hours of operation?
Yes, ma'am. I think, it's eight AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. And then Sunday, it was ten AM to four PM. It's all year round.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Brighwell.
What type of pollution and controlled environmental protection will you be implementing there?
Good question. All of our tanks are environmentally inspected and they're brand new. So we have, in the basement too, there's an oil receptor. So if anything ever happens where we dropped a little bit of oil, there is an oil separator that doesn't contaminate the city water. So it stops it there. I don't think it's ever happened with us. As for pollution, it's like start, it's the same thing as driving your vehicle. There's no extra pollution that's going to occur there. We don't, there, I mean, we don't burn oil. The waste oil gets picked up. So we're not recycling that oil at all. Waste oil gets picked up and it gets shipped out to a refinery.
Okay, so how, I guess you let me to the other question. How is used oil handled? How, how is it disposed or?
We have, like in, in our Livonia location, we have two, two seventy-five, two hundred and seventy-five gallon tanks. There's traps, oil traps that you get and then you'd have to drain those periodically. Like maybe once a day, we drain them and they go into our tanks. Then we have a oil company, GFI or GFL, they come out, they're licensed by the state also. They come out and, and they pick up the oil. They give us a receipt to give to the state of Michigan. And we, we file that receipt.
Okay. The reason this question is relevant because every time we've, I've had to deal with a business that dealt with, you know, gasoline or oil.
Yes, sir.
And the, the, the examination and, or, and all the, looking at it, there was, there was a healthy cause for the buyer to remediate that property. The property was, the soil was, you know, contaminated some type of way.
So we had it inspected. It's not contaminated at the moment. It's, it's not contaminated nor with the policy that we got in place with the oil receptors, it would not be contaminated in the late future neither.
So, so you're saying there's no way for the oil that's consumed there to, to seep into the soil?
No, because there are oil receptors in the ground. We have, there's a, so there, you have your main water. Before you get to the main, to the city water, there is an oil interceptor. So it's going to catch any oil that goes into the, if it ever gets leaked out of, which never gets leaked out of, it'll catch that oil before it gets there.
So is oil the only environmental thing that's damaged in the environment that will be consumed there?
We do not do anything with gas, so oil is going to be the only thing. Yes, correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselman Hoag.
My question got answered.
Counselman Banks.
Thank you. To the planner, did you say the fence is going to be on the east side of the property?
Yeah, the entire east property line where it butts up against the residential.
Okay.
Like literally from, from the north to south property line, that wall extends pretty much from the sidewalk on one end to the sidewalk on the other end. And the details up in the top, right on the slide, that is the proposed detail for the wall. Six-foot tall screening, brick screening wall.
Thank you. And then the couple that spoke this evening, I believe it's Manley was the name. Do you know how far from this property their home is?
I believe they said there's one home between them and this property. Yeah, they're like a home over. They're not the budding home, but they're a home, one home in, I believe is, is what they explained. Yep.
Okay, so, and is the individual whose property is abutting this, were they here this evening? There was another gentleman that spoke.
I don't believe so.
I don't know if he.
He's behind.
I know, but is it, is he the?
He didn't say he was the budding homeowner. He said he was nearby.
Nearby, okay. Thank you. And then you answered the hours of operations. Cars will not be parked here overnight.
No, ma'am, not overnight.
Um, the entrance and exit is only on Southfield Road. Um, and I think my other questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just to answer your question, Councilman Banks, the property owner who lives directly behind this proposed location was not present this evening.
Behind, you mean to the east?
To the east, correct. Just to clarify. Yes.
I'm sorry, do you have one more question? And what is the property to the north of this site? There's a building. What is that building?
I believe it's a small office building.
It's a, it's an office building?
I believe so.
And then, cause there's also a gas station somewhere around here. Is it next to the office building?
I think it's a little.
It's, it's three, it's about two and a half blocks away.
Two and a half blocks away, the gas station. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
First of all, thank you for wanting to start a business here in Southfield.
Thank you for having me here today.
I'm probably the wrong guy to be talking about this as the owner of two E Vs, so there's no oil in my, you know.
Well, soon, we will probably have charging stations in some of our locations.
But, but listening to the commentary amongst a variety of folk here, the one question that I didn't hear you respond to was related to if, if there was another location, would you be open to other opportunities?
So I, I purchased this one thinking this would be my first, and first one that I personally owned instead of leasing out. So I was building this, it was kinda like my pride and joy. I'm building this with my hands, my own money. My own family is gonna help me with this. Um, I am open and interested in other locations in the near future, yes. Uh, I would love to. And, and just another thing to point out, I don't know if this matters any, um, but right, we, so when we first came in to take in this place, it was supposed to be, we thought it was B three because I guess next door was B three. Um, right across from us was B three. So I figured in a way, when I took it, me and my wife and my kids went out there and we said this is gonna be ours. And we wanted to erect there, so this is a kind of a dream of where I wanna be also.
Are, I'm not sure if the gas station that's in close proximity, at one point there were oil change as well.
So the first time I've heard that somebody was gonna do an oil change around there, I think they were a mechanic shop, not an oil change. So they were doing auto repairs. We're, we're, we're just strictly quick loop. Um, the first time I've heard of somebody was today, forty years ago, that somebody wanted to put a quick loop up. And they weren't really that popular back then. I mean, they're a lot more popular now. Again, I think there's really no, no oil changes on Southfield. That's another thing. There's Discount Tires that I know at six ninety-six is an auto repair. We're not gonna be making any of the noises, nor will you see us taking tires, throwing them around. There's no blight. Everything's beautiful with us. It's, it's clean, simple, um, simple business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Mayor?
Uh, I know you have another, um, uh, oil change business in another location.
Yes.
Um, what, what do you anticipate the number of customers, uh, a day?
So in our Livonia location, which is a busier store, on the weekdays, we do around twenty cars per day.
So twenty cars come in a day?
Yes. And then on the weekends, maybe Friday, Saturday, the most we've probably done was around thirty, thirty-two cars a day.
And, um.
And again, they're only in there for anywhere from seven minutes to twelve minutes.
Um, and how does your price compare to, um, I, I usually take my car to a, the dealer?
Yes, sir.
So, um, how does your price compare to what a dealer?
Yeah, we're very competitive. So our conventional oil change, everything's a little different. Our conventional oil change, we feature Valvoline, so we're selling the same product. Uh, our oil change is twenty-nine ninety-nine and Valvoline's is forty-nine ninety-nine. Same thing with the full synthetic, we're about twenty-five to thirty dollars cheaper than the dealerships and then the instant oil changes.
Um, well, I know when I go to the dealer, I pay more than twenty-nine ninety-nine.
Yes, it depend, it also depends on the vehicle too.
Yeah. Are you offering any other services, like alignment or anything like that?
So we'd be strictly quick loop, um, windshield wiper blades, air filters, cabin filters, uh, like oil flushes, transmission flushes. And again, there are machines that take less than seven to ten minutes.
Okay. You know, um, there's a member of the ordinance, uh, here tonight that complained, um, sometime back about the gap in sidewalk, uh, on Southfield Road. And when, last time you were before us, you know that I asked about sidewalks. I live below Nine Mile and I'm a walker, um, not today, um, obviously. But, um, I do walk, uh, from my house below Nine Mile up Southfield Road to go to businesses there. And there is that ditch, uh, at this location and there's no sidewalk. So, um, that's something that I think is a definite improvement, um, to the area. Uh, uh, you know, I, I understand where the residents are coming from, um, but I also know that this is Southfield Road.
Correct.
And this is the only property that's not developed on Southfield Road. And, um, anybody that owns the property has a right to come before counsel and through the planning process, uh, for consideration of the business. So, um, uh, as was said by Councilman Hicks, I, I appreciate your wanting to do business in Southfield.
Thank you.
And investing here. Um, again, I don't think that, um, uh, I mean, I, I drive Southfield Road all the time. Again, I live below Nine Mile, I come up, uh, I live clo, off Southfield Road below Nine Mile. I, I come up Southfield Road all the time. Yeah, at times, times of the day, there's a lot of traffic.
Right.
I also go to events at the church. Uh, and I know that, um, uh, maybe I shouldn't say this, but I find it easier to go out at the back exit of the church, um, on Lathrop Street to Mount Vernon, to the intersection where there's a light. Um, so, uh, and, and it is all connected. I'm not making an illegal turn. Um, well, this is a council decision, but, uh, I think you have a good business plan.
Thank you.
And, um, there is a gas station up the street, so, uh, and, and there are a couple of buildings there that, uh, really, when, when you first get off the freeway, there are a couple of buildings that are really unsightly, kind of unsightly. They're very dated.
Yes. Uh, another thing, we, we do, again, in negotiations, hopefully, in purchasing another building on Southfield Freeway, which I know, and I was talking to somebody, uh, from the city that's developing the bike center, the bike trail. My family's own the oldest bike shops in Michigan. Uh, we, I would like to take another business and come and, and maybe do more business in the city of Southfield with bicycles too. So again, all my neighbors, I wanna be like family. If they have a problem with me or anything, you know, I, I'm very easy to talk to and I'll help them address the, the issues that they have.
And, you know, I, I do wanna say to the residents, um, uh, I understand the challenge at times of getting onto Southfield Road from the neighborhood. Uh, I know people in the neighborhood that I've visited. And, but it's the nature of the beast. Um, this is Southfield Road. There's seven lanes of traffic.
Right.
Um, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
You might have mentioned this before, is this, uh, be a franchise?
No. Uh, maybe one day, but for right now, there's only two stores that are Raceway Pit Stop. One's being developed and one is operating in Livonia. Uh, this would be our third location.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Haynes?
So the, the sidewalk, cause I'm looking at an old picture here of the, the, where there's brush and where there's a dip. The sidewalk is gonna go where the dip is, right?
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna fill in the dip.
And the wall is gonna be there too?
I'm sorry?
The wall is gonna be on Silver Maple?
No, no wall on Silver Maple.
Walls on the back?
Yes, ma'am. Between the house, so there's a piece of property that's gonna be between our house, the house that's behind us and our building.
So the sidewalk is gonna go all the way to the end of your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's gonna be.
I, I believe, if I could, there's another, there, uh, there's a picture right there.
Sidewalk runs to the property line at the east. The wall will run along that property line as well.
Sidewalk on the front, sidewalk on the side and sidewalk on.
Yes, ma'am, all three sides.
Okay, all right, that, that's not, that's not bad there. That, that looks better than what it is now, that's for sure. That dip and that brush that's there, um, and you're not using all of the property, so it's really kinda not really close to the housing.
No, ma'am.
In the sense that it is.
No, ma'am.
Cause the one by my house, it's, it kinda sits right back on, on our street and there's an ugly wall. I mean, you know, that, that's on the sidewalk. I'd rather the sidewalk than the wall.
Right. So in between the houses also, so it's not an ugly wall. We made it designer brick, a really nice, beautiful brick, and then that's where the trees come into place too.
Right, but I'm just saying when you're walking down the street, you're on the sidewalk.
No, you're, you're on the sidewalk and along, walking down the street, you can see beautiful landscaping that's there too.
And my concern too is like, that property you own, you, you, should you own it, that's, that's gonna be kept and maintained, right? Cause sometimes the brush from Si, Southfield Road comes on these places.
So we'll maintain it. I'm not sure, I don't think I own it, but I'll definitely maintain, cutting the grass there.
That's really important.
Yeah.
That's very, very, very important even down the years, but okay, thank you.
Either way, if I do own it or I do not, I'll maintain the grass and I'll hold responsibility for that.
Okay, just tell whoever cuts the grass to pick up trash first.
Absolutely.
That's a problem I have with my neighborhood. They cut the grass, but they mow the grass with the trash on it. I don't get that.
I love doing it myself, so it happens once or twice a week.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, to the deputy planner, if the residents are interested, can this sidewalk continue down, um, on both streets?
I mean, it certainly, like, I, I thought, when I talked to the city planner, or city engineer about this, she really wanted the sidewalks down the side streets cause she thought when Stratford and Silver Maple will get reconstructed, they could then look at, into putting in sidewalks that would connect. This just fills this gap and then connects it to the Southfield sidewalk. So this would be the connector that then like when they reconstruct those two side streets, they could look at and putting sidewalks that would extend further now.
Okay, thank you.
Can you show the picture of the actual?
Which one?
The, the other location that is gonna look like.
This one.
Yeah.
This one's obviously not a corner lot. It's a middle, mid-block lot, so you're not seeing the landscaping down the sides.
Correct, correct.
And I updated this, by the way, I did update the, uh, the landscaping that's there. It's all updated there. I, I, I try to update it every couple of years, make it more pretty.
All right. So I, I did have, you know, I don't, I don't wanna belabor and repeat what, what's already been stated. My question to you is, the, where the wall and the trees are, that's at the property line?
Yes.
Correct?
I, um, I think there is a little bit of space in between the home and the wall, if I'm not mistaken.
Way to start on the plans, the wall's on the property line, just like a fence would be, a line fence. Then there's a five foot six green belt with those trees in it, then you're into the pavement and it's all curved.
So there's about five to six feet of space between the property line and then the start of the, the back of that parking lot or the pavement.
Five foot six inch green belt, you can't read the dimension there, but I can see it on the plan here.
And then I believe it's another twenty feet before you, or twenty-five feet before you get to the, the building itself. So about thirty feet from the wall to the building.
The building is thirty-four foot eight inches from the rear property line.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I move at the rezoning request of Ali Mirha to rezone the vacant parcel at two four four one two Southfield Road from O S Office to B three, general business be approved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve P Z R two four dash zero 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 eight, the rezoning request of two, two, of two four four one two Southfield Road from O S Office to B three, general business. Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, I, um, is there a necessary need for this, uh, traffic study on this before we go? Do we need a traffic study on this? I'm just really, that's the only concern that I have.
Yeah, the planning commission looked through it pretty thoroughly and it's such a low volume, as you said, like twenty to thirty trips a day. A traffic study could be required, but the planning commission didn't consider it to be justified because the volume just wasn't sufficient. Unlike the Kroger gas, which could have hundreds, like a hundred or two hundred vehicles a day. Thirty vehicles over a ten-hour period is not a high volume.
So you do it based on the, the place, not the residential area?
Yeah, it has to do with the intensity of the use and its location.
That's a concern.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? So just to repeat, we have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve P Z R two four dash zero 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 eight. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no.
I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
No.
You had a, it's a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so it's a yes?
No.
Yes.
No. All right.
So it didn't pass?
It was a three-three?
Yeah, so it didn't pass.
So the motion fails.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, the motion failed. Um, it did not get approved for the rezoning. Councilwoman Hayes, did you have another comment?
Yes, I, you know, I support the idea of the business. I have a problem with the, the traffic study and then it's a concern of the resident. And, you know, we do have the, you know, people don't want things in their backyard. But my, my point that I'm making with that is, it's, it's not against the business, but I'm looking at the fact of the resident. I voted yes because I have a gas, an oil station in my backyard. There is not a problem. We don't have a problem with it at all. No, n, n, no issues, no noise, no anything. We have a problem with the other company, but not the oil. My thing is I support businesses, which is why I voted yes. I'm concerned about the traffic and I'm concerned about the other things, but I still think that there's a possibility. But I just wanna let you know that that's where I came from with that, you know. And I think even though we do the traffic study on the, the business, the church and all that does matter. I know people go to church Sunday, Wednesday, Friday and all these other days. And I didn't know there were houses on the other side, which has really little to do with the business part, but it's just frustration of the neighborhood. And I think maybe that should be taken up with something else. And even if you have people coming in your resident, in that area, I think that needs to be called in on something else. But I do think that supporting a business in the neighborhood and out, in all fairness. But I do think that supporting a business in the neighborhood, and in all fairness, that is Southfield Road. And I hate to say this, but when you live in a park, excuse, off of Southfield Road, that's, you're kinda gonna have, there are gonna be some businesses that do come. You know, then somebody's gonna come there, you know, and it's quiet now, but that's Southfield Road. You know, I just wanna say that. I do understand your concerns though.
Excuse me, we just, we don't, there's no comment right now. Councilwoman Hoag, you have another comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, we get, we get beat down up here from people thinking that we're against the residents and we're not against that. Let's, you know, this business owner came before us and asked us how we thought. Then they went and purchased the land, and at the same time, we didn't hear from any residents. So, we have to operate upon what's given to us, you know, when it's given to us, who comes before us. It would've been nice to have had, you know, the residents. I understand their predicament, but again, we have businesses who are coming here, who wanna be a part of the community, pay their taxes and all of that. And then when we support it, and then they go and buy the land, it makes us look bad. And we did take into all consideration, but we didn't hear not one resident come before us. And residents also have to understand, we also have a financial obligation to make sure that we are not picking and choosing the businesses that we support. If they, they meet the things that we ask them to do, and again, they come to us before they even purchase the land, and we do that. It's not always an easy decision. You can't satisfy everybody. It's a, it's a major street, it's available, and I'm just afraid that, you know, we can't lose everybody, because every neighborhood will tell us that. Not in my neighborhood, not there. We try to work with the business to make it as appealing as we can, to reduce the sound, to help with the landscape around it, adding of the sidewalks, all of that at their cost. It's not always an easy decision. Can't just say no, no, no all the time. We get beat up about that. We have to learn the balance. I mean, colleagues, we voted the way that we did. I apologize to you, because again, you came to us before, and I don't recall, I thought we were, you know, in support of it, and we didn't hear anything from, that there were any residential concerns. But I do think that what my colleague had said, you know, we have to start baking into the planning process is to make sure that there's engagement with the associations, so that we don't get one or two here tonight, but then, how do we know, is that the majority of the voice of everybody else? But we can't diminish their concerns either. But we also, we are a community of businesses too. So I just want our residents to understand that, that we have to learn that balance. And, you know, I would've been saying sorry to you, you know, it happens, it just happens. And I just don't want people to then come up and say, you know, you don't care about the residents and all. When you get here, you learn more than what you know when you're sitting there.
Thank you.
Okay? There's a lot that you have to take into consideration, and again, we are agents of the city too. So we have to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So sometimes it's not an easy decision, sometimes it is. Somebody's gonna lose, somebody's gonna win. And, like I said, I would've been sorry to the residents as well, because they live there. I don't, I mean, I live somewhere like that, but I'll say, again, you pick and choose where you purchase. You, the business, and the resident. You're living off of a major street. And keep in mind, we just don't wanna become a city where we lose our businesses. Then how are we gonna help pay for the roads that everybody is asking us for? How are we going to bring a pool that everybody wants? All of this comes into that. And so I'm just, again, I would've been sorry, saying sorry to somebody, but I know you came before us, and it appeared that we had support, so I apologize to you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just comment a little bit in response, I'd like, I know, on behalf of Planner Croft, who's not here to speak for himself, because he's on leave, when he brings stuff, when he encourages people to come before you early in the process, before they acquire the property, it's, that is always because we think it involves like a rezoning and it might be controversial. That is basically to kinda get some feedback before they tie up the property, as much as we can. But they're always told, this isn't a vote, this isn't a public hearing. You don't have a finished plan in front of them, it still could end up being a no at the end. It's still at risk.
Correct.
But at least you get some feedback from the council as to whether, and it's split three-three. You know, and one of you's not here, so, you know, he needed four votes, so it was close. So it's, I mean, when you first came to me, and it was OS zoning, and there's residential right next door, going to B3, we both had, well, you know, that, that may not be, with the master plan designation of local mixed use, OS or B3 could be legitimate. Either of those zonings is legitimate under that plan use plan. So that's, just to let you know, when Planner Croft suggests people come forward, because I've been in meetings where he's done it many times now, it's always when he thinks the council's discretionary approval, there may be some pushback in the council, at least you know, like you see it coming, it's not, the first time you don't, you get called isn't when it's in front of the planning commission for a public hearing.
I understand. And, you know, and I can remember, just not far from there, many, many years ago, there was a residential home begging us to turn it into a business. Do you remember? And so, we can't win for, what is that saying? Win for losing. So, I just, again, wanna say that, because we have people come up here and shame us to hell, but it's both ways. We had a resident, please let it happen. I can't sell this house. I need you to allow it to be business. I can remember that, me sitting in there, I remember that. And so, same corridor, right there. So we had the same issue. This is different, you know, back then, the resident was changing. I need to sell this to a business, and it did.
Yes.
So.
And as we all know, we have a lot of vacant office space, so the fact that I did that a new office building would get built here any time in the near future seems...
And I see why you would wanna be there, because at Nine and Beach, the traffic isn't there.
Right.
You know, in Southfield, if you got your, let me run in here and get a ten-minute change. So I get it, you know, so, unfortunate.
I appreciate you guys' decision. Again, I'm, I'm here, I have my life savings in it. That's why I came in front of you guys. I don't know if I get my fourth decision or not. I don't mean to step on any toes. I don't know what to do from here, though. Is this that, that's it, it's a no, you're done with it?
Yeah, I mean, it's, rezoning requires a majority vote. That didn't occur, so it's still gonna stay zoned OS for the time being, which means the oil changes.
And it can, it can come back to us at a future date. I don't know, there is a waiting period, I believe. I don't know if it's, is it a year?
Typically, it's a year, because otherwise, or some other substantial change in circumstances. Because you, you don't wanna get into double jeopardy where you're ruling on the same thing multiple times. That's not fair to the neighbors or to the property owner. It just creates a due loop.
And if it was a decision upon the traffic, I'm willing to do a right turn only coming out of the, out of the lot. If that was one of the decisions that were being made, I would cut out no left turns, and just make a right turn only.
I'm not even sure if that was a major issue, because fortunately, in today's society, you could put that all you want. That's not gonna stop people. They're gonna do it. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's the issue.
Even...
And what was before you was actually just a rezoning. It wasn't even a special interest or site plan approval. It was just OS to B3. Like, if he did, if he had approved the B3 zoning, and he decided not to do the oil change, another B3 use could've sought special land use and site plan approval there. So that also is worth remembering, is that this was a rezoning, like a straight rezoning, not even a conditional rezoning. So, you do have to consider the other potential B3 uses.
So that's it, that property is gonna sit, just out of curiosity, what do I do with it? I put it back up for sale, and I pray that somebody's going to purchase that property? That's what happens with it. And I know during COVID, a lot of people left, because I was one of them, that left the office job and is currently at a at-home job. So these buildings are vacant. I'm putting up a business that's never gonna be vacant. It's always gonna have business, and we're gonna be paying our taxes there. So, I mean, I'm kinda at a loss of words here.
You can, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks?
I, first of all, I also apologize. I know you did come before us, before you purchased this property, and I'm sorry to hear that you put your life savings in that. However, you do have an opportunity to come back before this body, and I would check back with the planner or the deputy to find out what that waiting period is.
Okay.
We don't have a sovereign person council here. That may have made a difference, and again, maybe it wouldn't have, but...
So do I get an opportunity for Councilwoman Cruz to make that decision also, or is that a no?
It already, it failed.
So, what I would say is, you know, tomorrow morning, you can talk, call the city, the Commissar Payson, and he can tell you what the other options are.
Okay.
We do have certain rules about how much we can, we can vote. How many, as you mentioned, we don't want someone to come back every week to try to get, get the votes to change. But we do have some rules, and he can go through those options with you, and figure out your next steps.
Okay.
I have a question. In your other location, how close are you to residential homes there?
Same distance, almost. Give or take five feet.
Just as a suggestion, it might be helpful, I don't know if you can connect, but maybe if the residents are willing to share their contact information, you can let the residents kinda talk, and let the residents in that location talk about their experience with you.
Yes ma'am. That's...
Because I'm sure that that weighed heavily on it. And it should, because it's their homes. But they don't know what we know.
Right, correct.
That you had come before us, talked to us about it, and based upon that, even though it's no guarantee, it's still. I don't know if they're open to that.
So this is my first time ever owning my own commercial property to build on. I've owned commercial properties in the past. I didn't try to get a rezon.
As a resident, would you be interested in that, or no?
Councilwoman Haynes?
I, I don't know how to address it, but I think that we strongly need to look into really talking to residents in the community prior to this. Somehow, to me, like you said, the people came to you. We need to get to both sides of the business and the residents here before these things can happen. The community as a whole needs to know, because that does weigh in. It does not always determine the factor, like I said, but it does weigh in. And people that, some people read and some don't, but to me, we need to stress to the businessperson the responsibility of contacting the residents. If it's just knocking on doors, saying, hey, I'm coming in your neighborhood. So we won't have, I don't wanna say fights, but these things that happen like this. You know, because my concern was, when they came before, I asked that question. I asked that question. And I was told, yes, we talked to the residents, they were okay. That, no, I didn't get anybody here that said they were okay. So to me, that's the thing, but my support lended to the business because of the road, the place in the street. But again, the concern there with the residents is an issue. But we have to be a city that welcomes businesses. We have to be a city that recognizes our residents. But there's an understanding too, the more business we bring in here, the better our tax base is. That is very, very key. And most people, not just you, ought to understand where you're coming from. No, for sure. Everybody has this thing, I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want it here, not over here, not over there. I mean, and I said, we dealt with this, and even in my own neighborhood. I live off of Telegraph Road. I can't, I don't have a whole lot of choice in that. That's where I chose to live. I hear noise, I hear all of this. I chose to live there, and I know that there are gonna be businesses. But what I have done is, when there are businesses that violate the things as a business, I call. I make sure, and we have city, the police, they come out and they take care of these things. So if there's something that were to happen over there, noise, smell or whatever, anything, any violation, you call and they take care of that. And he has said, I mean, even in that park where he's talking, where they go in, it's not like that's the paint place that's down the street in my neighborhood that I can smell. This is right there, and you go in this park. What I'm saying to that, it's a paint place, it's four, five, it's half a mile down from my house. I have a sensitive nose, I still smell it. But I chose to live there. I did. I chose to live in it. I can move too. You know, but what I'm saying to this, this is the cost of living, and it's the cost of where we do business. And we have to understand, we can't say no to everybody. We just cannot. We cannot. We have to welcome businesses here, and we have to be a place where people wanna come and say, oh, this is here. I drive a long way, even, I don't go to the oil change place by my house, because of how it's situated, and also because of kinda car I get. But, you know, hey, that's just, I make a choice. We all make choices. And like I said, I understand the side of residents, and I understand the side of business. And please, I don't know if you all have a neighborhood association or whatever, get together on other issues that are concerning your neighborhood, more than just this particular thing here. The houses, the cars, call. Make calls about those. If they're in the driveway, you don't have to argue, or those type of things. Deal with those issues that are concerning you in the neighborhood, that are none related to the businesses.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next we'll move on to our council portion of the meeting, and we'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
Nothing.
Councilwoman Banks?
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Haynes?
You know, I always have something to say. I just want to bring to attention of the parents that have teenagers in the high school age, eleventh, twelfth grade. I believe that's to the most that is geared towards New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, a key church in our neighborhood. Their motto is "Hoping to Feel." They are having a 2025 Black College Tour, March 30th, 2025, through April 5th, 2025. There is a cost involved, and they have been doing this college tour for 28 years. The tour highlights 11 historically black colleges and universities. If anyone is interested, please contact New Hope Baptist Church. You can look them up on the website. I don't have to give out all the details of that. Just New Hope Baptist Church on Nine Mile. That's New Hope Baptist Church Black College Tour. It's a very good experience. A lot of the children have made decisions based on the colleges that they have attended. They are well chaperoned, is a very, very good experience. And I would encourage you, parents, to share it with other people, tell other people. It is not just for the people that are members of the church. There are, this is for children, teenage children that are looking to make decisions about historically black colleges. Even if you're not interested in attending, and just going to those colleges. I happen to live down the street from one when I was in New Orleans, Xavier University. And it's not, I don't think it's on the tour this time, but we have places like Morehouse, Howard University, very prestigious black colleges. Just wanted to share that information and pass it along, and hopefully that it can be helpful to anyone in the community. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yes, with respect to veterans, the Oakland County Veteran Services is offering Veterans Resource Fair the 23rd of January. That, it will be located in Wixom. And I know this is not necessarily located in Southfield, but as I always said, that if you know a veteran, or know someone that knows of a veteran, just passes them for home, because we know that only 48% of eligible veterans are utilizing the veteran benefits. And the benefits are astronomical. You have medical, educational, health. And for this particular event, you will have to have your DD 214. They will also be passing out Myers gift cards, but you had to have your DD 214. It will be from 9:00 AM to noon at Ponyak Trail in Wixom. And also, I just happened to find out the other day that I always advertise the fact by the Veterans History Project, which is located in the Library of Congress, in over 300 interviews were associated with the city of Southfield. Those interviews were taken in Birmingham, the... were taken in Birmingham, Detroit, at the VA Hospital there. And a bulk of them were performed right here in the city of Southfield, the Southfield Public Library and/or the, the interview room at the, our local police department. And this comes to mind because just the other day, I heard numerous, at least four or five individuals indicated they, they regularly go on the Library of Congress site and look at those interviews. They were conducted by members of the Veterans Commission, myself, I think we had Steve Workus, we have Gerald Houston that protected, that produced those particular interviews. And they are, they, they are very interesting in life. You could, you could, and I always tell about Tuskegee Airmen Colonel Jefferson. Colonel Jefferson was a prisoner of war. And he made, Jefferson was a character. And he was a young man, I always call him a Spitfire, but he made being a prisoner of war seem like it was fun. And he gets a little bit of humor in there where, but I won't get into that right now. But anyway, anyone who's interested in military history firsthand, first-person witnesses of, of military history, you can go to the Library of Congress. That's LOC.VHP. That's Victor Hotel Papa, Library of Congress, LOC. My partner here trying to help me with my memory. But anyway, it is the Library of Congress. And you just look for the Veteran History Project there when you go to the site. And it's very easy to, to locate. There's more than 300 interviews that are associated with the city of Southfield. You can even search for City of Southfield in that search and it will bring up all the Southfield interviews. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to, public service announcement, the, with all the cold weather, the Southfield Pavilion will be used as a warming center this week. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor was gonna make the announcement, so. But I will just ask, I'll leave that for him. But the, I just want to remind everyone to always salt, shovel your sidewalks. I, just like the mayor stated earlier, he goes walking. I too go walking even in this cold weather. And I've slipped several times on sidewalks that were full of ice and were not properly salted. There's, may not be enough snow to shovel, but please be careful of and watch the ice. Also tomorrow here at our, the Southfield Pavilion from 10 to 3, we will be having the Secretary of State's mobile office will be here. So if you do need any business, they do recommend you make an appointment, but you can still show up and they can take care of easy items such as renewing a driver's license or ID, first-time licenses, applying for a handicap placard, things like that. The last thing I wanted to mention, I know Councilwoman Hoag touched on it on this last item, was, you know, we get residents who come and you'll never find, you know, residents will disagree on, on every item that, that comes before us. We want a business here. We don't want a business here. And sometimes we have residents who come and complain or bring up issues that is important, are important to them, or they, you know, that it's a widespread issue in the city, different things like that. You know, the, especially comments about the city doesn't care or the council doesn't care. You know, we, we do care. The city has 75,000 residents. And if one person doesn't like that something that, that has happened or they don't agree with the decision, that doesn't mean that as a council, we don't care or that we're not protecting or we're not helping our residents. The city has to look at the overall city. We have to look at the overall residents. We have to look at what's best long-term for the city. So when, when you hear comments of, you know, the, the council doesn't care, or, or I have this issue on my street, or I had this one issue with my home and the city didn't care, the council didn't care, that's not always, that's not true. It's not always the case. There's always, there's, there's always three sides to every story. But there, you have to remember that the city has, again, 75,000 residents here, numerous businesses, and we have to make judgment calls. We have to do what we feel is best for the overall city. If we can help each resident, that would be wonderful. But that's not always the case. But we do care as a council. We wouldn't be up here if we didn't care. And we, we want to help everyone, but unfortunately, that we're not always able to help everyone with every need that they have. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that yesterday, we had a very successful Martin Luther King Peace Walk and program. Despite, it was eight degrees when we set out yesterday morning from Hope United Methodist Church to walk to the pavilion. We had many, many people who bared the cold and certainly appreciate the efforts of the police department, emergency management, fire department, as well as Parks and Rec, to do the facilitation and make sure that everybody was safe at yesterday's event. Again, the pavilion was packed. We had very good turnout. More people came to the pavilion than walked, but that's understandable. I also want to men, I did want to mention, I was contacted yesterday because this cold spell, it's even supposed to be colder tonight. I think we're going down to three below. We do have a warming center in the Southfield Pavilion. It will be open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM through the week. On Friday, it will close at 6:00 PM. So if, for some reason, you're without heat, your furnace is on the fritz, you can certainly come to the Southfield Pavilion. And again, the, this will be through the rest of the week through Friday at 6:00 PM. Again, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. It's supposed to warm up by next weekend, so hopefully we won't need a warming center. Thank you. That's my report for the evening.
Thank you. And we hope that the entire MLK event should be airing on the south, the city's cable station later this week. So, city administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. At the January 6th Committee of the whole council meeting, we had a resident express concerns about homeless person in the Greenfield-Meadowood area. I want to let council know that we did post the no temporary sign. Have had meetings with both human services and the police department. We continue to monitor this situation. And, you know, the complaint was primarily about keeping this, the property cleaned up. And COVID is also monitoring the situation. Beginning of the year, the staff, we are starting our budgeting process and departments are in the initial stages of that process. Early on, I want to let council know you'll be hearing and reading about the Great Lakes Water Authority. 10 years ago, when the authority was formed, we had successfully fought to cap their annual increases at 4%. And that was for a 10-year period. Well, that 10-year period has already surprisingly expired. And they have communicated to all of the communities are looking at a 6% to 7% increase in water rates. There are some years that although the Great Lakes Water Authority passed a 4% increase to us, we were able to keep the increases in our water rates below that 4%. In addition, SACWA, who we, we, SAC, we buy our water from SACWA, SACWA buys their water from Great Lakes Water Authority, has started a rather aggressive capital planning process, which is, you know, frankly overdue. And they're looking to fund it. So as we go through our water budget, it's gonna be a more challenging years because we no longer have the caps that we negotiated. The communities will continue to work with the Great Lakes Water Authority to keep that, those costs in line. If you recall, 10 years ago, there was so much on, just the actual infrastructure owned by the, the city of Detroit's Water Authority was not, had not been managed in years. There's been substantial investment to ensure that we have quality, safe water. So we continue to do our part, working with SACWA. The, the entire SACWA system is now being mapped out. We are way ahead of a lot of our peers in that process. And so I want you, I want you to stay tuned. In the next couple of weeks, I think you'll be seeing more in the local newspapers and media regarding what, what's happening with the Great Lakes Water Authority. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, council. I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening to those who are watching and those in attendance. I just want to say that election season is going to begin to heat up as we've heard in portions of this meeting today. And I want to give our number to the clerk's office. It's area code 248-796-5150 as we are putting together proper and, and correct information to give all those who have a desire to continue to serve and those who have a desire to serve. So I just want to say again, yesterday was a very, very interesting day. We had our Martin Luther King holiday, the same day as the inauguration for our 47th president. But the main thing that stuck out for me is that we are blessed to live in a country that still has a peaceful transfer of power. And that is what I saw yesterday. No matter what we agree on, no matter who we support, we have to continue to support our democracy. So again, the number to the clerk's office is 248-796-5150. Thank you.
Thank you. We heard from our treasurer earlier today. Mr. Planner, do you have anything additional?
Nothing additional at this time, sir.
All right. And we have nothing to schedule. Our meeting is adjourned.